I will now turn it over, due to weather issues and all, I'll turn it over to our county administrator because we have an action we need to take prior to going into our public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had a conversation with our emergency manager, Chief Andy Fossa, and the state has declared a state of emergency which includes Pasco County as a result of this local pressure system that is coming through the area, and it is his recommendation that we follow suit and declare a local state of emergency. We are already receiving reports of wind damage pre-storm, and with the great possibility of flooding, we believe it's in the county's best interest and its citizens to declare a local state of emergency. I've confirmed with Attorney Stein-Snyder, we've prepared a local state of emergency resolution there for you to consider, but I would ask that the board grant this at this time.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, sir.
While we did not pass out the resolutions to board members, it is Resolution 24-053, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida declaring a...
Thank you. Resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida declaring a state of local emergency related to the unnamed low-pressure system. The resolution mirrors those that you have issued in the past. The first whereas clause is the one that would be different. Whereas the governor of the state of Florida has issued Executive Order Number 24-03 on January 9th, 2024, declaring a state of emergency exists for certain counties in the state of Florida due to forecast models for enhanced risk of severe weather across northern Florida, including Pasco County, herein after referred to as the event. As the administrator said, the county attorney and the administrator would recommend that you adopt Resolution Number 24-053.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you, sir.
And we're gonna, because of the weather, we're going to take item R49 before we do the public comment because we have staff here that can leave and go back to the other side to where their homes are based on this storm coming in so quickly.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeffrey McHittrick with Community Development, Assistant Director, and I have before you an ordinance to introduce... He's pulling that up. We have an ordinance to revise our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and this is a technical revision just to get us in compliance with state law. And so we receive SHIP funding, which is State Housing Initiative Partnership, each year through the state, and as part of those funds, we are required to have the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The current ordinance is from 2008, and it is in conflict with current state law. So this ordinance will revise to consist of eight to 11 members appointed by resolution by the Board of County Commissioners with a specified term. And the commission or the committee will meet at least biannually and submit annually a report to the Board of County Commissioners. The current ordinance, as I said, is a eight members, or correction, 11 members. We're going to change that to be between eight and 11, and then they were required to submit a report to the board triannually. That will now go to annually. And so basically, the duties is to revise or to review established policies and procedures, ordinances that relate to affordable housing, and to recommend specific incentives that may facilitate affordable housing while also protecting the value of the property. Additionally, the committee is tasked with doing an annual report. That also must go to the State Housing Coalition each year. And the advisory committee can recommend incentives. There's a list of them that they are mandated to look at and to make recommendations on. Again, those are just recommendations to you. They can also look at other incentives that may help with affordable housing. So with your approval, we'll set this for an ordinance or for a public hearing, February 6th, back here at Date City, and then we will prepare a resolution to appoint members to the committee, and that will occur February 20th. And the A-hack will then begin meeting in March and have a couple, three meetings probably in a public hearing, and then bring it back to the board in June with the actual report to recommend any incentives for affordable housing. That's basically all I have. Questions?
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 5-0 passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's done. Now we're going to go into the public hearing area. I'd like to remind the board that we got bad weather coming, and sooner we can go through these processes with your voice being heard is the best thing we can do, and it's kind of unusual. Always before I've been the chairman, this is the third time. I've never been chairman all my previous times with so many items that are in District 1.
We knew you were gonna say that. We took bets on that, didn't we?
We had 25, we had probably 25 of the 29 or so items today in District 1. Normally, I would be sitting in my seat and I would make those motions and move them forward. So I have to depend on my commissioners being prepared and making motions in seconds so we can get through in time so everyone can leave and be home before this terrible rain comes. So, okay, with that, Terry. P-51, I guess it is?
Yes.
P-51?
Yes.
Okay. P-51 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023, and by affidavit, certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nictario Espitos, Planning and Building Director. Item P-51 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Conference of Plan, providing for a small-scale conference of plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 23, from comm commercial to PD, plan development on approximately 26.11 acres of real property located east of US 301, at the northeast intersection of US 301, Gulf Boulevard and Roanoke River Way, and a tax amendment creating subarea policy 27177, 301 East, and map amendment to the future land use map 2-9, adding subarea map 2-977, 301 East, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability in effective date, and this is a request to continue to a date uncertain.
Okay, do we have to have a motion for a continue?
Move to... Move, move, move the continuance to a date uncertain.
Date uncertain.
Okay.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. 5-0 passed. Move on to P-52.
P-52 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
Item P-52 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Conference of Plan, providing for a small-scale conference of plan amendment to the future land use map 2-15 and sheet 14, from res 3, residential 3 dwellings per gross acre to res 6, residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre and approximately 18.36 acres of real property located at the northeast corner of Old Pasco Road and Hadlock Drive, and an amendment to the future land use map series, map 2-13, rural areas, removing the subject parcel from the rural neighborhood protection area, area 4, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability in effective date, and this is a request to continue to a date uncertain.
Well, this is from last year. I don't know what's going on. But you can have it. I'm gonna be in Washington.
Is that it? Do they continue?
Okay, I have, Mr. Stein-Snyder, I have someone signing up to speak to this. Normally, if it's being continued...
52, 52 was shown as a continuance. It is not normal for you to take public comment on...
Right.
Things that you've advertised as a continuance.
Right. Okay, I got a motion, second, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none, passes 5-0. Move on to P-53.
P-53 was not noticed for this meeting. It will be continued to a future meeting and be re-noticed.
So if it wasn't noticed, we don't have to have any motion?
It would, no, it needs, well, mine says continuance requested. I'm assuming that they did other, have they done other notice for the project?
There was other notice for the Planning Commission and BOPH.
So the board meeting hadn't been set when these went forward? Okay. In an abundance of caution, move that it be continued to January 23rd. January, January 23rd at 1:30 or soon thereafter.
Except County Attorney's Motion. Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P-54.
Again, P-54 was not noticed and will be continued to a future meeting and be re-noticed.
Same thing.
So move the item be continued to the January 23rd Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport-Ritchie at 1:30 or soon thereafter, as they may be heard.
Move to Except County Attorney's Motion. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P-55.
P-55 advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023, and by affidavit, certified mailings and site postings.
Item P-55 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Conference of Plan, providing for a small-scale conference of plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 23, from res 6, residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre to res 9, residential 9 dwelling units per gross acre, on approximately 30.26 acres of real property located at the southeast intersection of Chancy Road and Diana Drive, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability and an effective date, and this comes to you with a recommendation for approval and adoption of the ordinance by roll call vote. If you would like a presentation, you can be.
Okay. No one has signed up for this item?
No, sir.
Should I ask the, is there one in here to speak to this item? P-55. Seeing no one, I entertain a motion.
No one on Webex either?
No one on Webex.
Okay. Move approval?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Okay. District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P-56.
P-56 is advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October 18th, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
This item is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Conference of Plan, providing for a small-scale conference of plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 22, from res 3, residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre to res 6, residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 28.10 acres of real property located at the southeast intersection of Ashton Oaks Boulevard and State Road 54, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability in an effective date. This comes to you with a recommendation for approval and adoption of the ordinance by roll call vote.
Can you, can you put the map up for a second, Terry?
Yes.
No, closer. Is this your district, Commissioner?
No.
This one?
Two.
Okay.
It's two.
Just wanted to pay attention, if you see that easement to the south? See that?
This one?
Yeah. I mean, you have, you know, my favorite word, potential opportunity for a trail there, and I just hope you'll just like dig into your, your district and see, see what you can help create for your, your citizens and have a wonderful quality of life around there. I think it said FPL on Mr., on the map that I saw, but when I look at it, it, it doesn't look like it's under FPL ownership, but...
Florida Power or Florida Power?
I know it says FPL on the map that I was showing yesterday, which then makes sense.
Not in their, their service territory, but okay.
Exactly. That's South Florida, I think, or other parts of Florida.
Yeah.
But I just want to, you know, I don't know what the master plan for connectivity of trails is in this area, but there, there are a lot of people moving in here, and we should be doing something. And so when I see a corridor like that...
Is there a trail there somewhere already that you're talking about?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know if staff could show me what the planned opportunities are in this area. There's one along State Road 56, but I know nothing about what's going on on State Road 54.
There are trails that are planned for Chancy Road, which is further...
I saw that in the narrative on the one that just passed before.
Further south.
But you have to be able to get there.
Yes. Just west of this site at Fox Ridge Boulevard, which is... Am I looking at this correctly? Missed anything here?
So it just might be good for you to have a meeting with people, Mr. Waitman and the county, and look at what opportunities might exist and keep an eye on it before everything's gone to...
I appreciate that, Commissioner, but this, this power line easement, Terry, this is from my understanding, that's, that's set?
It's what? No, no, you can go, so Duke is difficult to put a trail in, but my understanding is the other ones aren't. And when I looked up the ownership on Pasco Property Appraisers Site, that, one of those easements was owned by the Homeowners Association of Ashton, whatever, and I think that this one, the one to the east, is owned by the developer or the landowner.
Yes.
So just saying, more thought should be going into the region, or some, some plan, and here's an opportunity.
Yeah. Just something you had to ask. Terry, the companion rezon is not on today's agenda, is it?
I don't believe so.
Then, then this discussion can, can be had when, when you're not in the comp plan stage, but at the rezon stage.
So on the potential trail opportunity, we don't need...
It's, it's not really affected today. I'm just bringing it to your attention on this opportunity.
All right. Entertaining a motion.
Move vote.
Second.
And this is roll call vote.
Okay. District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P-57.
P-57 is advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, August 2nd, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
This item is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Conference of Plan, providing for tax and table revisions for the villages of Pasadena Hills, BOPH, Conference of Plan Goal Flu 6, allow increase of land area in Village Cores of Villages B and C, increase maximum residential conversions, and add conditions to transfer unused densities to Village Cores, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer severability in an effective date. This comes to the Board of County Commissioners with recommendations for approval and adoption of the ordinance by roll call vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Good question. Terry, so I'm glad we're doing this, and I know staff's going to be in control of how it gets allocated. Are you going to also include infrastructure conditions that might not generally be put in place to make sure they're going to be in place, like trails out in front and...
Yes.
Transportation issues?
Yes.
Kind of work those in so if you can stretch that density on somewhere else, that you got the capacity to stretch out the trails, whatever else to connect?
Yeah, the typical conditions that we would have for development, for trails, and making sure that they have the capacity to service the development, they'll be there. These, these amendments here are to essentially increase the amount of allowable land designated as village center. So your, the BOPH plan currently constricts the village center to be 25% of the whole village, and this will increase that village center to 35%. And so, yes, those, that infrastructure will also expand into that additional 10% we're adding.
Okay. I don't have anyone sign.
I have some questions. Hey, I'm all for, you know, the increased densities to help the villages be viable, but I, I have a question. I asked this of the administrator when we were meeting yesterday. My, my fear is that we're going to have an apartment complex, then an apartment complex, and then an apartment complex, and they all have their own entrances, and you can't get, it's just apartment complex, apart, instead of, is it designed so there's a road network and, and there's just density in front of those roads, or is it just little self-contained apartment complexes lining the roads? Because that's not really a village.
Well, it's hard to speak to theoretically, but we have worked on projects in the county where we line the roads with the multifamily apartment buildings.
And the roads contiguous, and you, and so, you see what I'm nervous about?
Yeah, so a lot of that is covered in the MPUD negotiations that we, that we do.
Identify yourself for the...
Identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm so sorry. I'm Gavin Kobe, planning and development. So a lot of that is handled during the MPUD stage. We negotiate with the applicants to make sure that we're getting our village centers and not just apartment complex, apartment complex, apartment complex. And our master roadway plan makes sure that we have our village centers, have those large sidewalks with the zero setbacks and all that stuff for the commercial buildings and stuff as well. So, yeah, all of that is kind of handled at the zoning phase.
We worked on this with Mr. Two when we did the Odessa Village Overlay Plan, or whatever we call it. The apartment complex has road, like interior roads going through it, and the apartment buildings are pulled up to the roads. And they're, they're not, you know, busy roads. They're in, interior neighborhood roads, but we designed it so it's, it's more like a, a town feel than a apartment complex, apartment complex, apartment complex. It'll be to our detriment to do, to not have them have that feel. So just really want to call that out.
Okay.
Yes?
I know back in twenty nineteen, it propelled the T and D aspects of VOPH. Does the T and D aspect, does that accomplish what Commissioner Starkey's describing?
It can, yeah. We are currently revising the T and D ordinance that is in the Land Development Code. So we actually have a revised draft that we received shortly before the Christmas break. So we're working on that right now, but it, it's possible that T and D can accomplish that, yes.
So it's, it's no secret I have concerns with how these villages, these villages are built out. So what's, I've heard Gavin, but what's our assurance is that the quality of villages aren't corroded away, and we don't have examples of what Commissioner Starkey has described, and there's not walkability. It's just, you know, clunky, it's not aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah, we have the condition, well, we have the provisions of the Land Development Code to rely on. And we also have the advantage that a lot of the entitlements that are to be given or made in VOPH, they have to come through as MPUDs. So we have the ability to condition and negotiate like Gavin was discussing. On top of that, we are, like I said, revising the T and D code itself, and hopefully we'll be bringing that back to the board soon, such that the T and D ordinance that we, that we have can be more user-friendly and applicable to the current development that we're seeing today.
No one has ever used it. It's so bad.
Yeah.
It's really bad. I don't think anyone's ever used it. We didn't do it, use it. We built only, we had to, we got a million different, what's the word? Variances or?
The old term was variances. The new term is alternative standards.
Alternative standards. It's one million dollar turn of standard after another.
So when, when the, when the new code is brought forward and approved by the board, that then will be in the Land Development Code, and then it's, there's a, for VOPH at least, a policy question as to whether or not the T and D mandate would be turned to VOPH.
Yep.
Well, we can, we can achieve these things without putting that ordinance back in just on how you, I mean, it does require some kind of interconnectivity, and can't we have some say on the locations of where the parking lots are and the buildings are in relation to each, to the lot, to, to each other?
Yeah, we can. And we're currently working on draft provisions to the Land Development Code itself to, to do exactly what you're describing, Commissioner. And that, those can be negotiated into various MPUDs as well, particularly the VOPH.
I think that should be our direction.
So this come up basically when we go to zoning?
I'm sorry?
You go to zoning, and that's when this is gonna come to force. Okay. Do some studies before we get to there. I have no one signed up for this item from public. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this item?
Do we need to do anything to this to achieve what we just said, or is this not related to that? Just give them more density? Not necessarily how it looks.
Okay. Mr. Two wishes to come forward and speak. Yes, sir.
Joel Two, forty-seven hundred Ridgeview Road, Palm Harbor, Florida. This particular amendment really has no impact on the issue you're speaking to, because all this amendment does is allow us to not lose. In other words, recapture density we're losing outside the village core, where we're not achieving the financial plan density and being able within the same village to, to make sure that could be transferred to the village core. But this amendment in no way affects design requirements. I mean, you already have cross-connection requirements for every MPUD, and of course, you get in construction plans, and if you're not happy with the internal grid system and the cross connects, you're not going to approve those plans. So I think what you're talking about is a design issue. Just to refresh your recollection, you already did ask that staff initiate kind of a VOPH review about what density is being used, what are these villages looking like, where do we stand. And we actually have our first organizational meeting this Friday, based on your direction, for the outside consultants and planners to start working with staff to try to get their arms around this. So my suggestion would be that you have staff add that to the discussion list of that review process, is what controls do we really have on how the village centers are going to be laid out and address that. To the extent, there, there are requirements already in the enabling documents for how you have to design these villages, but if you're not comfortable that they're sufficient enough, that's something that could be looked at there. But, but it really has nothing to do with this plan amendment that simply allows us to use density that otherwise is gonna be left on the table. And then we're not gonna achieve the financial plan density to pay for the roads and the infrastructure. That, that's the concern.
So, Mr. Two, the, the villages as they sit, they all have certain entitlements. So when we come to that plan and say there's not room, or it can't be designed to be in that village, what happens to those units you can't use there? Do they?
Right now.
Upcharge the financial?
Right, right now, they go away and get lost, and we, we will never get paid those development fees. So we won't, that's the problem, is we won't have the assumed density to generate the capital budget funding that's gonna be required at the end of the day. And that's why we're doing everything we can within the bounds of reason to try to ground truth and achieve the intended density in each village, but doing it the way you have mandated, which is concentrate that village in the center and then feather it out as you go to the village edge. You know, don't get it too far out on the edge. You've got to transition and have lower density at the edges and concentration in the middle. Now, the question you're raising today, what I'm hearing, has to do with, okay, in that village center where we're pushing the density, what is that center going to look like?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be designed with a, with a grid street system to the extent you can, given wetlands? But, but subject to wetlands and other issues, are we getting an internal grid system, and are we getting interconnects to make these things look like villages?
Right.
And I think that's a fair, a fair comment.
Yeah. And those items in that, or those units inside that village, when they get close to that village edge, they stop, they can't go past that.
Cannot go to another, see, all these are.
So if you lose them, then it's recalculation of the numbers, you may have to pay more if you're in that.
Exactly. And all of a sudden, your, your mobility or development fees could end up doubling. And then you stifle the market because you can't be competitive at delivering the product.
Right.
So that's, there are a lot of moving pieces out there, and that's why I suggested in November, when this came up, that, that rather than just making isolated unrelated decisions, it would be prudent, I think, now twelve, fourteen years after the fact, is let's kind of look at where we are, ground truth where you are, and get you comfortable that there is a design process moving forward, so that as these things get built, they will actually look the way you envision in your minds you want it to look.
Right.
But we are having that first organizational meeting on Friday with Terry's team to get started. It would be very easy to add village center design concepts to that to-do list.
Right. I think that's why I came up to the board, because we're getting more happening in the village of Pasadena Hills, and the board sometimes wonders if, if those units that are gonna be in those villages are approved, or did, did who'd look at it to say it fits? Because we didn't necessarily know, but when it's approved by the Board of Villages Pasadena Hills, they're supposed to make sure, and I think Gavin has said this to me before, that they do fit.
They do, and every individual zoning, as we've said before, every individual zoning in a village has to also bring forward the overall village plan based on the prior approvals and demonstrate how what they're doing makes sense in relation to what else is already approved. So it is, it is a continuing holistic approach to what the village looks like today as compared to yesterday.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think one of the things we asked staff to show us, too, was, you know, what have we approved? I'd like to know where we are so far, and I mean, I'd like to see like a conceptual, okay, here's this, and then next to it is here's that, as far as things that have started to move through. I, who's the gentleman that bought a whole bunch of the villages and is doing T and D? And I, I need to go have one too.
Mr. Galvin.
Yeah. I'm not so worried about his neighborhoods, but I'm, I'd be very curious. I, I'd like to know what the heck we've approved, because for me, it's a little confusing. We do one here and one there, and.
Right.
So how, how's it working? Are we, are we achieving what we hope to achieve?
I think what she's alluding to is the fact that we have asked to have a workshop or something along with the Villages Pasadena Hills Board, so that we're all on the same page, knowing that when they approve it, it fits, and it's gonna end up like they say it's gonna end up. So I think that's just a reassurance this board is asking for, and we've sent that message out. So I don't know when that's gonna be, but in the near future, that's, that'll help us all, I think. Okay. Any other questions? Is anyone here to speak to this item?
I do not have anyone signed up.
All right. No one signed up. Mr. Two spoke. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second by roll call vote.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion pass four zero. Move on to P?
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
P fifty-eight is advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November first, twenty twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P fifty-eight, this is the adoption hearing for this item. It's a Land Development Code amendment. We were hoping this would be Amendment sixty-seven, but it's actually Amendment sixty-six. So the Board of County Commissioners directed staff to make some changes to section nine oh five point two, which is landscaping buffering. What we did is, the board wanted staff to add, to give applicants the ability to be able to use the current code provisions in the landscape ordinance, instead of having to pull old landscape files that had been approved in the past. So that, we added that into the applicability section. I'm gonna read the, the ordinance title and ask that you please accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote. So it's PDD twenty-four zero zero nine zero, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, chapter one hundred, general provisions, section one oh eight point one twelve enforcement, chapter three hundred procedures, section three oh five neighborhood meeting, chapter four hundred permit types and applications, section four oh three point seven mask grading, section four oh three point ten landscape plan, section four oh seven point two variances, section four oh seven point five alternative standards, chapter five hundred zoning, section five twenty-two master planning unit development district, chapter six hundred overlay and special districts, section six oh four northeast rural protection overlay district, chapter eight hundred natural and cultural resource protection, section eight oh five wetlands, chapter nine hundred development standards, section nine oh one point two transportation corridor management, section nine oh one point six street design and dedication, section nine oh four fire protection, section nine oh seven onsite parking, loading and stacking, and lighting standards, chapter one thousand miscellaneous structure regulations, section one zero zero two wireless communications facilities, section one zero zero three gates, fences and walls, chapter thirteen hundred concurrency and impact fees, section thirteen oh two point two mobility fees, section thirteen oh two point three school impact fees, section thirteen oh two point four parks and recreation impact fees, section thirteen oh two point five library impact fees, section thirteen oh two point six fire combat and rescue service impact fees, and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability, providing for repealer, providing for severability, inclusion into Land Development Code, and an effective date. Again, if you would please take public comment and adopt by roll call.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to go, go to section three oh five one of neighborhood meetings. I've talked about this before, but as far as a neighborhood meeting goes, you know, we had, I'll say just the Saddle Brook hearings, where we had a series of meetings with different groups all the way around. And when you've got an MPUD like that, I think we should dictate that it be one meeting that everybody can attend, or if you have a series of meetings, at least one meeting that everybody can attend right up front. The, the Lynx Golf Course going through the same type of thing. We had separate meetings, so nobody knows what everybody else is thinking, no discussions are done in full. It, it kind of divides and confuses everybody to what's gonna go on. So I would like to see something done better than that. And when I see the change is gonna be, the application is gonna be then, as far as like starting the neighborhood meeting, accepted for review. If you keep it at accepted for review, it's early in, earlier in the process. It gives the neighborhood meeting a chance to look at it, and then reactions can happen, changes can be made up, up front. If you wait till it's deemed complete for content, I don't think we need to wait to that line. As soon as they're gonna submit something, I think that's when a neighborhood meeting should happen and go from there. And at some point, if it's an MPUD, not just a regular development, but if it's an MPUD like that, I think someone from staff should be there to actually listen to what the residents have to say as well, so they can incorporate those things in to their, to their input.
Mr. Chairman, let me play devil's advocate with the commissioner.
Okay.
However, if you don't wait until it's deemed complete for content, it may not be, it may not be something that moves forward. I mean, it may not be baked, basically. So deemed complete for content is just when we start, or planning staff starts review. It's not way into the process.
Right.
It's within the first.
Yes, correct. Within the first less than thirty days.
Right.
Yeah.
So maybe within thirty days of the submission.
So.
And then you get thirty days from, because right now, the way it's done, it's gonna be, the, the thirty days before the public hearing's gonna happen. That's the only time it has to happen.
The code does require that the meeting be held a minimum of thirty days prior to the public hearing, and that a minimum of twenty-five days prior to the public hearing that the neighborhood meeting summary package be submitted to staff. The code also says that the applicant is to, to have at least one meeting is required, but they can have other meetings as well. So the reason for this particular code change, complete for content, is because there was an application for conditional use that came in, that the applicant submitted the application, it was accepted in Acela, but not accepted for comment, content. The Acela system accepted the application, the person set up the neighborhood meeting, and when the application, when the actual application, all the comments were received, the request was completely different. It was for a completely different height of a tower. It was a completely different type of tower. So the person just went ahead and had their neighborhood meeting without it being accepted for, for content.
All right. Well, that's, that's a good point. I don't mind that. For, for those reasons, okay, I'll be all right with that. But I do want to see it that, especially on an MPUD, though, I don't want divided up meetings. If I got, if I got a group of people all affected, I want them all to see it in one shot, not broken up to one little group here, one little group there, one little group there. I need to get everybody to look at it.
Brad, do you have something you can add?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Brad Tippin Plague, I just wanted to add that there's, there's a couple of elements involved in that, and I understand exactly why you'd like to have that in there as early as possible. It's very important to get that community involvement as early as we can. Our only main issue here is that what's originally submitted to us is almost never the end product. So if that meeting. So if that meeting is done too soon, then the community's not seeing.
I'm okay with that fact.
Okay.
I'm okay with that change.
The other issue is that with a project like Saddlebrook, you could have a very large group of people, several hundred people. We don't have a lot of facilities, given the criteria to meet, we would have to figure out exactly how to do the logistics of that, because there's certain times of day that these meetings need to happen, certain days of the week, it can be difficult. We probably want to include some sort of a hybrid option to do some virtual, some in-person, something like that, to be able to accommodate what could possibly be an extremely large crowd like that.
If we had to go to a school, fine, but as far as the Saddlebrook argument, that place could have helped it all. So I really don't want to go into that argument with it, but I think if you're going to have affect a MPUD that's already been existing, and it could be, that'll be Bank of Woods East, you've got something that's been entitled there for many, many years, people bought into certainties, you're going to make any changes to any part of the MPUD, everybody should see it, at the same time to comment on it when it's complete, but at least have that notice where they can look at it. And then if they need to make changes, they can go do that, or encounter that in, but at least we can go. And if it's that big as an MPUD, then I think a staff person should be there at that neighborhood meeting, so they can actually take the feedback back to their, back to our own staff to say, here's what I heard, here's what they said, do we want to make any changes?
So we have actually, we took your advice at the prior hearing, and we actually have already incorporated that into our notice to ask people to provide us with that feedback, provide us minutes from the meeting, any questions or concerns directly to us, instead of just turning them in at that meeting, to make sure that we actually get all that feedback.
Okay. All right. Commissioner.
Yes.
This may be, I don't, it sounds like both, both the examples that I'm hearing is, you want a neighborhood meeting that includes everyone in an existing MPUD.
Yes.
And that's a different, that's a, that's a finite subset of new MPUDs that are coming in. So, so we could add something to this that said, for existing projects, the neighborhood meeting shall accommodate all of the, all of the neighborhood associations that exist within that MPUD.
That's my, that's my desire, thank you.
Does that, staff, okay, I mean, did I, I mean, it could be, it could be a, it could be a large number of people, but I think that it's a, it's a rarer occasion than than what you normally deal.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question on the mask grading. So, and I have a photo, and I sent this picture to the administrator and one of our land use attorneys this week, and I was talking to some folks in the development industry in the last few days. This is about cogan grass, which is on my commissioner items for discussion, so just waiting for it to come up. This is Longleaf Neighborhood Four, and, and I'm concerned when we go to clear property that has cogan grass on it, it then gets transported somewhere, it's on the, it's on the machinery, and it gets brought into someone else's property. That's how it was brought into my neighborhood of Aristida. Unfortunately, when it started growing up behind someone's house and the burn that they put in, they wouldn't let the HOA go in and spray it, and now it's all through my neighborhood. Cogan grass is one of the world's most invasive grasses, and we want, you know, you know how they let the python thing get, get away from them in the Everglades and the Malaluka? We don't want our county to get inundated with cogan grass, we don't. So, you know, I've asked and asked to have a policy about development and cogan grass. At the very least, we need to be identifying if cogan grass is on, on property before they start clearing it, what's the plan, so that we don't spread it to someone else's property. And so this is, this is the, this is the cogan grass along Starket Boulevard in Longleaf Neighborhood Four. Can you go to the next page? And they, they're starting to scrape this whole corner away, and it's solid cogan grass on that corner, which I had alerted the Longleaf Neighborhood to the CDD Board to please do something about this, but this is in Neighborhood Four, not something that they were in charge of, and I think it got cleared before anyone did anything. So there really needs to be a policy on how we protect ourselves from this. And is, is the mask grading place where that would occur? And?
Yes, that's being worked on with, with the executive team, we've talked about it. And then Public Works also has an eradication plan, but that's post.
Post.
Obviously, it's already.
We don't want post, that's more expensive.
Well, I, I agree with you, but, but yes, we're working on that. Brad, I don't know if you've got something else to add?
No, I was just going to say, yes, that we're working with Public Works and also Keith Wiley's team, Natural Resources, and we actually have started putting language in conditions of approval on projects that are going to be going to construction, that, you know, for those invasive species, if they're going to have to use the proper process to get rid of them.
Okay, well, I'd like to add it now, to say, you have to identify if there is cogan grass.
Prior to the.
On your property, and, and confer with someone on how you're going to properly deal with it, before it gets to every neighborhood.
So, so that language is, actually already exists for invasive species in general?
So what happened here?
Just doesn't call out cogan grass.
What did, what did we do, what did we ask them to do on this one, if it's already there?
I'm not positive, I would have to research that.
What department handles that?
Handles.
Invasive species on a, on property.
So, so as of the discussion just a short time ago, we would look at that as part of the site plan review and condition it, and it would be followed through with the Natural Resources team. They would work with Natural Resources as to how to, and Public Works as to how to actually.
Okay, so I'm asking you.
But that, that probably wasn't in place at the time these were.
Well, this just, this just start, Longleaf just came through this in the last six months, right?
Yes, this was only a few months ago that we started having that discussion, working on cogan grass. So that's a much newer policy that we have in place.
Okay.
So if, if that had been in view when they first started, that's when this has got to be taken care of, when they first started development.
Yeah, we, we alert them to it, and we've, we've tried to make an effort of having our Natural Resources team as part of pre-application meetings, and, and site reviews, actually comment in that regard. They're trying to make trips out to see, they've made some changes in how they're, they're actually going out and looking at some of the weather deviations, and they're seeing, physically being at the property and seeing some of that. So hopefully, you know, this is going to be something that we can deal with a little bit more easily in the future.
Right. But I think that's something that we need to really take hold of, because if you, if you don't make it a big point to get rid of it, then it will never be gotten rid of, and it'll be spread all over the county. So that's, that's the idea of attacking when a new development's starting, let's make sure they're getting rid of it the right way. Let that be part of the process.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, and like, and like any process, it takes a little bit of time before you see that come out of the ground for things that have received other.
That's right.
You know, and then we have the reactive portion through Public Works and Natural Resources to deal with it while it's on the ground, and, you know, that.
Okay. Mr. Waiton?
Thank you, Chair. I'd be remiss if, if reminding staff and everybody involved in this, that it's been a solid year, when Commissioner Starkey and I brought this up very early on last year.
It's been more than a year.
Yeah, and she's brought it up prior, prior to me joining the board, so for, you know, twelve months to go by on something that's a real problem, when I think this board collectively over a year ago said, hey, let's get disciplined and address this problem, is a bit unacceptable to me in a timeline.
I think we've been very disciplined in, in moving ahead of a lot of advances that the board has asked over the past year as well, to include cogan grass, and to include a number of other things in the development arena. And again, we, we continue to make advances on the development services front with how we handle and manage development in the county. So I appreciate it, I certainly share the impatience for wanting to push a lot of things forward, but we're not, the, the team is not sitting on their hands. We are, we are moving and advancing the board's directives, and it just, it just takes a little time. So we do appreciate the board's patience as we, as we move and, and try to take care of these items, to, to include cogan grass. It is not lost on us, but I, I understand your impatience, sir, and, and we will continue to advance that, as well as a number of other initiatives that the board's asking for.
So on the drive here on fifty-two, which is all the new development of, I shouldn't say all, never say all, a lot of the new grading of State Road fifty-two has cogan grass in it. But it blew my mind when I passed an island, and I didn't, I took a picture of it, but I don't remember where it was, if it was, but it's on the new part, the island is brand new. And the island, the grass coming up is cogan grass, in a little island in the middle of fifty-two. So they put the fill in there from somewhere, and then brought the cogan grass in. What, what I was told was it is on the, the scrapers, and that they, they may have to wash those down in some way, and I, maybe we provide a place somewhere where they can go and get washed down, if they have worked on a piece of land that has cogan grass on it, but that that's one of the ways it's getting spread is from the equipment.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there anyone to speak to this item?
There is no one signed up.
No one signed up?
I, I have a question for Denise.
Well, we've got more items to cover, so.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'll be quick. Did we, did all the, we had a meeting yesterday, and did all the things we talked about with code and staff, do we need to tweak anything that we, from our discussions yesterday?
We do not.
Okay.
I didn't, I looked at my notes, and I didn't write anything.
Oh, I recognize Barbara Willhite.
Barbara Willhite, sixty-three, twenty-seven, Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, three four six five two. I understand the conversation about the neighborhood meetings, I'm not really clear what you're going to write, because we need to get a trigger first, is when we have to do a mandatory neighborhood meeting in an MPUD, like we're changing an amenity, decreasing open space, modifying a golf course. Maybe we get a list of stuff that's a mandatory trigger, and then have a mandatory requirement that everybody get noticed for one meeting. Because I think you're adopting here, right? So I can get to comment on whatever is written pursuant to your direction, so, but right now, we don't have a mandatory requirement for every MPUD that's amended, that we do a neighborhood meeting. I certainly don't want to see that happen, because we do lots of changes where we just change a lot standard, you know, a setback, and those types of things. We don't want to have to go to a meeting with the whole neighborhood of Trinity to do that. So that's my thought, is we, we just need to sit down and identify the triggers for a mandatory meeting, and how we have to conduct it, so that the commissioners' concerns are addressed. Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
Maybe if the conditions of the substantial deviation.
Well, that's a whole bunch of them. And we do, we do modifications every day to, to MPUDs, we modify, I just modified Northwood twice, Northwood MPUD twice, for very minor things, substantial amendments, and we would have had to notify the whole neighborhood of something that nobody would care about. Nobody did care about it, because we noticed people who didn't care, so.
Well, that's, I guess sometimes we're going to, maybe we need to.
Well, I'd ask we can continue this matter then, so we can get this right. Well, this is actually really important, I mean, you can't.
Sure. There are a lot of live local related items within this adoption, so we do not want a continuance. We could take direction to work on a code amendment, to make modifications to the neighborhood meeting section, that could come as either a standalone, or I always have a ton of things that I need, I've, I've already started on new modifications that need to be done to the Land Development Code, so.
And right now, I think you're working also on, as Terry and I talked, the signage as well. So maybe when you get the signage ready, you can bring that back as well.
What happened?
Signage?
How to notice and make notice of the project?
Oh, got it, yes, yeah, I don't think that that requires a code amendment, though. That's, that's just procedural stuff. Yes, it's something we're working on, and the RV thing we're working on as well, so, yeah. So I've got a lot of things I'm working on, so.
Okay.
I just don't want to, I don't want to derail this one, please.
I know, I, I just don't.
So many really important things in here.
I just don't want to get in a situation again where I've got the situation where it's not in the code, so you can't make us do it. I don't want to hear that again. So I don't know how we get around that.
Okay, move approval.
Second.
Motion second, roll call vote.
Uh, hang on. Does it include the changes we, that Mr. Steinsteiner made?
That's up to you. You've heard, you heard Ms. Willhite.
Oh, sorry.
Object to it.
Yeah, I've heard that.
So I don't.
And I've dealt with two neighborhoods that have, like, been burned by it.
And I think you've heard that Denise saying that she's going to bring it back in a subsequent amendment, if that, if that's acceptable to the board, but that's a, that's a policy decision for you all.
All right, we'll wait for it to come back.
Okay, we'll wait. So Denise, you got that?
I have it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor, a roll call vote?
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Bradford. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one, Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed four zero. Now, Mr. Steinsteiner, if you will give us the public hearing information.
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there is no opposition to the application, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request a petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case, that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name, and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application isn't sufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land Development Code.
Okay. Would you like to swear, buddy?
Yes, if anyone's going to speak on the public hearings, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay. P fifty-nine?
P fifty-nine was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
Item P fifty-nine is PDD twenty-four seven six five five, it's a zoning amendment, Clinton Avenue MPUD Master Plan Unit CC Waller Revocable Trust. The request is to continue the item to the February sixth, twenty twenty-four, Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty and date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero. Move on to P sixty.
P sixty was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and was continued from the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three BCC meeting to today.
P sixty is PDD twenty-four seven six eight three, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Crossways MPUD, Crossways three oh one LLC. It, the request is to continue the item through to the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Board of County Commissioners meeting at one thirty and date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero. Move on to P sixty-one.
P sixty-one was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and was continued from the October tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to today.
P sixty-one is PDD twenty-four seven six nine seven, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Ruben A. Maria J. Sanchez. The request is to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Move to continue, time uncertain?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero, move on to P sixty-two.
P sixty-two was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three.
P sixty-two is PDD twenty-four seven seven two five, zoning amendment, Lando Lakes fifty-two P-62 is PDD 247725, zoning amendment, Lando Lakes 5241 MPUD, Sandridge Commercial LLC and State Road 52 Williams LLC. Uh, the request is to continue the item to the March 12th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 and date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-64.
P... P-63?
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, P-63 advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
Item P-63 is PDD 247737 for the Orange State MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Orange State Enterprises, Inc. The request is actually to continue to the February 20th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. I know the continuance date does say to 6th of 2024, but the planning commission continued it to 1/18, and that does not give staff the appropriate number of days to turn the item around.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed four zero. Move on to P-64.
P-64, yes. Tampa Bay Times, uh, advertised in Tampa Bay Times, September 20th, 2023. It was continued from the November 14th, 2023 meeting to today.
P-64 is PDD 247744, zoning amendment, Dewat Hanny and Nima Todd Nirmine. Uh, this item is, the request is to continue the item to the March 12th, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in date city. Um, I know the request is for February 6th, however, the planning commission continued it on to a date where we would not be able to turn the item around in the appropriate time.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, all opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passed four zero. Move on to P-65.
P-65 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
P-65 is PDD 247751, zoning amendment, Thomas J. Ambrose II and Jennifer Ray McNeil. The request is to continue the item to the February 6th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passed four zero, move on to P-66.
Okay, P-66 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20th, 2023.
P-66 is PDD 220, PDD 240024, sorry. It's for a comprehensive plan amendment. The item was advertised as a continuance, the continuance date is to February 6th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none, uh, motion passed four zero. Uh, we will now move to P-69.
Okay, uh, P-69 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 1st, 2023.
P-69 is PDD 247708, it's a zoning amendment, the name of St. Leo Commons VOPH MPUD, RDPD 5 LLC for a rezoning from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for 796 dwelling units and 75,000 square feet of non-residential uses on approximately 101 acres. The request is to continue the item to the February 6th, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in date city.
Move to continue, time certain?
Mr. Chairman, this was, this was advertised as an approval, um, and it's being changed to a continuance now, so it's my, it's been my practice to advise, advise the commission that anyone who has attended that cannot make the continuance date may speak, but if they choose to speak at this meeting, they cannot speak again at the, at the continuance date.
Okay. So is anyone signed up for P-69?
There was no one signed up for P-69.
And nobody on WebEx?
No one on WebEx.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to P-69? Seeing no one.
I will restate my motion, move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Okay, got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none, uh, motion passed four zero. And I think we move to P-72.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
In my directions.
Okay, P-72 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Commissioners, P-72 is PDD 247732, in the name of Hudson Family Trail MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, HWHGC MGA LLC. It's for a rezoning from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the development of a maximum of 116 single-family residential units on approximately 38.72 acres. For the record, there are ex parte communications that have been provided to the Clerk's Office from Commissioner Mariano, Commissioners Mariano and Commissioner Bradford. The request is to continue the item to the January 23rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Mr. Chairman, same, same rules as 69, this was advertised as an approval, it's now being changed to a continuance. I suggest you take public comment for anyone who cannot make the 1/23/24 agenda, but if they speak now, they cannot speak again on the 24th, or on the 23rd.
Is anyone signed up to say, uh, speak to P-72?
Uh, no one has signed up in person, but you do have someone online, Ms. Julia Bartunek. Ms. Bartunek, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, I'll wait till the January 23rd meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Might want to call if there's anyone here.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this item?
Seeing no one, move to continue, time certain?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passed four zero.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and I apologize, I should have done this prior to the Land Development Code amendment. I'm, my understanding is that I have to go to addendum item 142, it's a continuance item, so that way we'll just end the continuances, if that's okay.
Uh, what numbers?
It's 142, your addendum item? I think it's called A142.
142 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 04, changing from res 1, residential 1 dwelling unit an acre, to res 3, residential 3, 3 dwelling units an acre on a approximately 38.71 acres of real property located north of Hudson Avenue and 1.68 miles west of Hayes Road.
This item was advertised by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
And the request is to continue the item to the January 23rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Okay.
And there's no one signing up, it was not advertised either, so.
Does anybody, oh, nobody's here to speak to this item? You know, looking, seeing nobody.
Continue, time certain?
Got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion passed four zero.
67.
67, okay.
Okay, P-67 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times, November 1st, 2023.
P-67 is PDD 247560, it's a zoning amendment, Bogart 2 MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Bogart 2 LLC. It's for a rezoning from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for a maximum development of 136 single-family dwelling units on approximately 30.8 acres to consist of, of single-family detached and townhomes. Um, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee and the Planning and Development Department.
Is there anyone here to speak against this item?
There is no one signed up.
No one's signed up. I see no one to speak against it, remains on consent, we move on to P-68.
P-68 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 1st, 2023.
P-68 is PDD 247700, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Kiefer VOPH MPUD, Project VOPH. It's for a rezoning from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for 200 single-family detached dwellings on approximately 122 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee and the Planning and Development Department.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak against this item?
No, sir, well, not signed up.
Nobody signed up and nobody's on WebEx?
Correct.
Okay, and no one in the audience that remain on consent, we'll move on to P-70.
P-70 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 1st, 2023.
P-70 is PDD 247709, rezoning amendment in the name of Hawes VOPH MPUD, Hawes LC Junior Trust and others. It's for a rezoning from an AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to, to allow for 523 dwellings on approximately 90 acres. This will consist of townhomes and multifamily apartments. Uh, there are ex parte communications with all the commissioners, those have been provided to the Clerk's Office earlier this morning. Um, and also there is a request to add some additional language in the condition, we don't have the language right now for you, but that will be provided after today. That has to do with the applicant not seeking the tax exemption, um, in the live local for this project.
I, I do have questions on this one.
Absolutely. You want to pull?
Is anyone?
Who's, who's here representing that?
Mr. Two, I believe.
Um, not sure if this is the one that I questioned for the layout.
Is it P-70 or?
Um, it's St. Leo Commons.
That was a continuance.
Oh, that one?
That was continuing.
Oh, so, sorry. Well, it says P-70.
Right, that's Hawes.
So, huh. And this is in VOPH? Okay, so I guess I'm gonna have a ques, I don't know, I've seen this one. Have I seen this one? Can you, can you tell me, uh, can you describe the project to me, please? I'm sorry, I know we're rushing through this, but I want to make sure we're doing.
We'll wait on this, we'll pull this item off to the side, P-70, and.
St. Leo Commons, that was continued.
We'll leave it there and we'll go to another consent item, P-71.
P-71 is going to be pulled, there are some folks here to speak to the item.
This one out, someone.
So P-73? So you're gonna pull P-71, there's people here to speak to it?
Oh, pull both of those, 70 and 73. Or 71.
And you're gonna move to 73.
Okay, move on to 70, P-73?
P-73 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times, October 18th, 2023.
P-73 is PDD 247747, it's a zoning amendment in the name of Clyde J. Keys, Aaron Cutoff. It's for a change in zoning from an I-2 industrial park, general industrial park district to an I-1 light industrial park district and an I-2 general industrial park district with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that reserves the uses for I-1 and I-2 that also discusses landscape buffers and sidewalks. Um, for this item, there's ex parte, uh, that was, um, with all the commissioners, um, individually, of course, that was sent to the Clerk's Office earlier today. Uh, comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, um, does anyone sign up?
There's no one signed up.
Okay, so there's, is there anyone here to speak against P-73? Seeing no one, leave it on consent, move to P-74.
P-74 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
P-74 is PDD 247750, it's a zoning amendment, Irving and, and Irving D. and Melody M. Delgado for a change in zoning from an AC Agricultural District to an AR5 Agricultural Residential District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
There is no one signed up for this item.
No one's signed up for it. Is anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one, uh, it remains on consent, move to P-75.
P-75 was advertised in Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
P-75 is PDD 247752, it's a zoning amendment, BMC 31722 SR 52 LLC for a change in zoning from a C-2 general commercial district with a deed restriction to a C-2 general commercial district with an amended deed restriction. The amended deed restriction, voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction is to allow RV and boat storage and truck rental as ancillary to the allowed self-storage on the property and also to preserve the uses for those uses that are consistent with the C-2 general commercial district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
There is no one signed up for this item.
No one's signed up. Okay, uh, is there anyone in the audience to speak against this item? Seeing no one, we'll move on to P-76.
P-76 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22nd, 2023.
P-76 is PDD 247753, zoning amendment, Carly Properties LLC and Scotty Crockett for a change in zoning from an AC Agricultural District, C-1 neighborhood commercial district and an I-1 light industrial park district to an I-1 light industrial park district with a voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction that preserves the uses to those uses listed in the I-1 light industrial park district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
There is no one signed up for this item.
Okay, anyone here to speak against, uh, P-76? Seeing, seeing no one, may leave, leave it on consent and move to P.
Can I, I have a few questions on ones. I don't want to pull them off consent, but I just want to ask this because I'm looking so fast, which I don't. So first, I want to ask on P-75, that is on State Road 52. Sorry, we're going fast. Is that right, is it, it's on the south side of State Road 52?
Correct.
Does it require a sidewalk in front of it? Because when I passed Marotta, it didn't have any sidewalks in front of it, so we have a mistake there. A sidewalk or a trail, I mean, we're putting, looks like the proposed route for the Orange Belt Trail is going to be along some portions of the old State Road 52, so we should have them be putting it in if that's part of the route.
I don't see anything on here stating that there's going to be a sidewalk installed. All it talks about is stub outs to the properties that are adjacent to the west.
Okay, so, I mean, pull that off, we need to have.
This is, this is C-2.
I don't care what it is, if it's on State Road 52.
But you can't stipulate a sidewalk in a straight zoning category. It would have to be something that is required administratively and they'll take care of it, but it's not, it's not.
So let me ask.
My colleague is just telling me that it is required by the code to install a sidewalk.
Okay, but.
That's already a code requirement.
But we just did a press release on the proposed route for the Orange Belt Trail, which is going up, the proposed route right now is to go up parts of Old 52. It could not be on this part, I just don't have it memorized, so someone tell me, is this property on the proposed route for the Orange Belt that we just put out the press release last week?
If someone can look up this information on GAS, that'd be fabulous.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to come back to you with an answer on that, if that's okay. I mean, I've got Nick here.
Okay, and then on the Keys, um.
Well, this is State Road 52 and not, not County Road 52.
It is, so it's not the old County Road 52.
75?
75 says County Road 52.
Yes, so, um, then my next question is.
So the, the trail is going apartment road, which is north of this project.
Yeah, somewhere it connects into Old 52.
Not at this location.
Or whatever we're calling it, State County Road 52, so it's not anywhere near here.
Yeah, I got you.
But would, would we want people around there to be able to access that trail? I mean, do we need a multi-use path and not a sidewalk there? Maybe it's not the great big one, but do we need something different? That's, so that's a question on that one, and then I want to come back to the Keys concrete one. It's, requires a sidewalk on the south side of 52, um, just west of 41, but it doesn't say anything about a sidewalk on Aaron Cutoff. And are we going to require anything on Aaron Cutoff side in front of that property?
So again, being told by my colleague that the code already requires a sidewalk along Aaron Cutoff.
Okay, but you called it out specifically on 52.
We called it out specifically because of the width and because there were questions as to where the trail was going to go, so the applicant said, hey, irregardless of where their trail's going to go, I'm going to actually put a sidewalk, so we actually wanted to
On both sides.
Commit to that, specifically to that sidewalk on 52 in the, in the voluntarily agreed upon.
Because the multi-use trail is on the other side.
Right, that's correct. That is correct.
But, but, um, uh, Angeline did not put in, as of right now, a sidewalk along 50, the southern part of 52. And when I had a conversation with Secretary Gwynn, um, we're going to talk about this And when I had a conversation with Secretary Gwynn, we're gonna talk about this again later, he said that the county agreed that all the sidewalks on fifty-two between Sun Coast and forty-one would be put in by the developers. So we have to be very careful that we're dotting our i's and cross ties.
Who in the county agreed to that?
In twenty eighteen.
We're trying to substantiate that statement right now.
He, he had someone else in the office. Justin said that as well, that she, we said, I know, it's dumb, but that's.
Do, do anyone here recall it?
What?
Do you recall it? I don't recall being asked that.
Well, I went in the conversation. That was with our engineering department.
We'll have to verify.
Nothing. Sorry, but I, I see what's going on and I'm kinda going with Secretary Gwynn. Okay, um, so I think we're good then.
This is all, you know, as you know, this is a Euclidean zoning, so it's all incorporated into the, the voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction in the Keys situation.
So is it possible we, instead of getting a five-foot sidewalk, we can get eight-foot on the, the seventy-five, I guess? Up to an eight-foot?
Which, which item are we?
You guys have planned.
Which item are we speaking about now?
The one next to Marotta. Isn't that, isn't, does this say it's coming in next to Marotta?
This is P seventy-five?
Yeah.
I think the, if you'd like to pull it from consent, we could, the applicant can come up and speak to that, to that item. Because the code will require a sidewalk, but it's not gonna require any.
I know, but I'm just trying to get something where two people can walk sideways. So, two moms can push a stool, whatever. Okay, we'll pull that one off then.
Okay.
You're gonna pull seventy-five off?
Okay.
I thought they.
Okay, P seventy-six, did I say we leave that on consent? I already had it marked. So we move to, uh, P seventy-seven.
All right. Well, did you already do P seventy-six and I made you go back?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. P seventy-seven is Tampa Bay Times, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and by appetite is certified mailings and site postings.
So on P seventy-seven, this is the transmittal. So we're asking you to please take public comment and authorize transmittal to Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies. It's PDD twenty-four zero zero three-two. It's Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA twenty-three zero two. Land O' Lakes fifty-two forty-one, providing for transmittal of a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map two-dash-fifteen and sheet twelve, changing from ROR Retail Office Residential, COM Commercial and RES three, three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre to PV Plan Development on approximately seventy-six point seventy-two acres of real property located south of State Road fifty-two, approximately nine hundred feet west of Land O' Lakes Boulevard and a text amendment creating sub area policy flew seven point one point seven six. Land O' Lakes fifty-two forty-one and a map amendment to the future land use map two-dash-nine, adding sub area map two-dash-nine seventy-six. Land O' Lakes fifty-two forty-one and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer, severability and an effective date. This is going to be a mixed-use project that consists of one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of commercial and three hundred and fifty multifamily uses, uh, which are multifamily, uh, three hundred, three hundred multifamily and fifty townhomes. Uh, this is gonna come to you further on, um, as an MPUD, um, on this, on this item. And the adoption for this one is scheduled for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four at one-thirty.
And I see that they are building their, their sidewalk on fifty-two. And see, the developer's supposed to be putting them in between Sun, Sun Coast and forty-one.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, just a quick.
Okay.
Sidewalks on fifty-two and forty-one for this project.
I had a meeting on this one.
So that answers some questions?
I think so. There's no one signed up for this item.
No one sign up for P seventy-seven?
Yes, sir.
Is anyone to speak against P seventy-seven? Seeing no one, I'm gonna ask for a motion for all the consent items, P sixty-seven, P sixty-eight, P sixty-nine.
No. P sixty-seven, P sixty-eight, you skipped P sixty.
No, no, I've got those set aside. P seventy and P seventy-one are set aside.
Seventy-nine.
Because it's got people.
Sixty-nine, you've already continued, was my point. You just mentioned, it's not on the consent agenda, but you continue.
Oh, okay. I got you. All right. So.
I have that you pulled P seventy, seventy-one and seventy-five.
I pulled P seventy and P seventy-one and what?
Seventy-five.
P seventy-five, I thought we answered that one. So we pulled it?
So if I can, it.
Okay.
What remains on consent, according to my notes, is sixty-seven, sixty-eight, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six and seventy-seven. They are, that, that is your consent agenda.
Um, on, on this last one.
So we pull sixty-seven?
Can I ask a question on P seventy-seven?
No, those are your consent. That is your.
Oh, that's what I'm looking.
Um, is it connecting to any other property around it or is it only accessed by fifty-two? I saw something about Bullock.
There are, there are connections. If, when you look at the MPUD, the, the MPUD is gonna connect, um, in different locations. Your interconnects.
Question?
Thank you. Before motion's called, I save my local questions to the end. I assume everywhere, just to confirm on record, that all our commercial industrial sites on here.
Absolutely, yes. Yes. And then we did add that tax, you know, we're adding that one to pause.
I just like to hear. It makes me feel more comfortable.
So what are my items again? Yeah, I want to be sure we did this right.
Your consent agenda is sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Okay. Sixty-nine?
No.
No.
Seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six. Seven.
Seventy-five is pulled.
Seventy-five is pulled?
Yeah, seventy-five was pulled.
Okay. Try this again. Sixty-seven, sixty-seven?
Sixty-eight.
Seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-six and seventy-seven.
Will we pull the remaining consent agenda?
Set.
All right, got a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Those, those numbers were your consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion passed four-zero. Now we gotta go back and pick up, you said sixty-nine, wasn't it?
Seventy. You continued sixty-nine.
You continued sixty-nine.
Oh, sixty-nine continued.
And you continued seventy-two.
All right, go back to P seventy. Does anyone sign up for P seventy?
There is no one signed up.
Get home before the bad weather. They're telling me trees are down on the west side already.
Yep.
You hearing that, Mike? Mike, are you getting any, any news? My staff told me there's trees down west past them.
Okay, we're on P seventy.
Commissioner Starkey, did you want a full presentation for me or did you want me and Joel to answer any questions for you?
Um, well, what I was wondering was, can, you know, like the discussion we just had this morning, or earlier, sorry. Um, how, how is this relating to the property around it?
Say again?
Well, is it gonna be, this has, this is a multifamily, right?
Well, it's some about, Joel, too.
Thank you.
Forty-seven on Ridgeview Road, Palm Harbor for the applicant. Uh, this is in Village C. It has both town, it has a townhome section and a multifamily section. It is bisected by the new Clinton Avenue extension. So you've got one parcel on the north side, one on the south side. And it is just adjacent, just almost adjacent to what will be the new Handcart Road intersection because Mr. Galvin is building Handcart Road up to the new Clinton Avenue extension.
Okay.
So even, even though it looks like it's sitting in the middle of nowhere, no, now, it's actually going to be at the intersection of Clinton Avenue and Handcart.
So, you know, when I see McCabe, I forget that that's Clinton.
That's the new extension. So when you drive over here on that extension, you literally drive through the center of this property and there'll be a segment on the north that will have access off New Handcart and the segment on the south will have access off Clinton Avenue. And so it's both townhomes and multifamily. It's in the Village, it's in the Neighborhood Core and the Neighborhood General, so the density is there to support. The planned density is already there to support this. But actually, even though it has apartments, when you do the math, it's ninety acres with five hundred twenty-three units. I did the math this morning. It's only five point eight units per acre.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I, I have no problem.
So it's not, it's not terribly dense.
I have no problem with the density.
Okay.
I just want to know how it's gonna feel. Is it gonna be, um, connected to the properties around it?
It has to be, see, everything out there.
Kinda like what we did.
Everything in VOPH has to have cross connects per the code and per the VOPH plan unless you, the Board of County Commissioners, agree to delete any of those cross connects. And that actually has to be a variation that you approve. I mean, we go through those every time. So unless somebody stands up here and asks you to delete a cross connect and shows you the wetland or whatever reason it is that they think they can't connect, those connections are required. I mean, Brad can answer that, but when the, when the preliminary plan and the site plan come in, they're gonna have to show staff that, that cross connect unless you've waived it.
All right, so will the buildings be pulled up to these roads that are going through it?
There is, there is no developer builder. I mean, there is no pre-existing plan. See, we're at the zoning stage.
All right.
So until there's a preliminary plan and proposed construction plans, that whole design is not done.
Okay, so I have one more question. If this is, this is on Clinton.
New, yeah, the extension.
And, uh, and our trail, the, the trail stopped on which road? Where did that, where did the trail stop? The county had DOT stop it. What was, what's that north-south road? It's not Prospect.
Prospect King, Happy Hill?
No. What's the, what's the big north-south road west of Prospect? Curly. So this is east of Curly?
Yes.
This is where we have to figure out how we're gonna put that trail, missing trail back in. So, uh, where is Prospect on this?
It's east. Prospect is east. This is between Curly and Prospect.
Okay, so then on this section, they're putting the trail in on the north side. DOT is gonna come back in and put it on the north side.
Okay.
And then once we get to Prospect, I think they told me they're gonna have to put it in on the south side.
I think that's what you said at a prior meeting.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that there's right-of-way here.
Well, that Clinton Avenue right-of-way is quite substantial.
I, I think that DOT has the right-of-way already.
That's what we were told until they get to at least the Prospect.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just pointed out to me that in condition number twenty-six, you've already apparently extracted ten more feet of right-of-way from us.
Then we can landscape it.
So congra, congratulations.
We can put some shade trees on there.
I won't file an amicus, I won't file an amicus brief with the pending US Supreme Court case on that subject.
And if you, if you were still, if you were still acting as a lawyer, lawyer, you're gonna object to the condition.
I'll let it go.
Mr. Waveman had a question over here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just to appreciate, what side of the road is multifamily on? This is one of the highest points on the new State Road fifty-two, beautiful hill.
Oh, really?
And I, depending on what side the multifamily's on, I'd hate to see the south side of this project. There's a hayfield there now. I mean, the views, the views there are just fantastic. If you press, they'll go over. And you see that end up with multifamily, potential multifamily concerns.
Even though the plan already allows that density in that village center?
I'm just asking what side of the road is multifamily?
Uh, I believe the current plan contemplates the townhomes on the north side of that topography that you mentioned.
The north side would be going down.
Well, the north side is contemplating for townhomes and the south side for multifamily, and that's where the density is allowed under the plan.
So that would protect your view, right? Looking north?
Apartments will be.
On the south side?
The apartments are going down the hill and the townhomes will be on the south side uphill overlooking.
No, north side. Didn't you say townhomes are on the north side?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it makes those multifamily buildings look shorter if they're below you than if they're above you.
Mr. Two, can you just confirm for the record that you were sworn?
I was sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me.
It's a common plan amendment.
Any, anything else, Commissioner Starkey?
No, I just wanted to, um, I just want to be sure we're talking about and emphasizing
Seventy.
The importance of good design.
And that's why, as I said on the earlier plan amendment item, my suggestion is that you ask Mr. Petos to add that to our topics Friday afternoon about how the planners and the stakeholders out there can work together to get all of you comfortable because clearly you're all uneasy.
Well, we don't know, we.
Right.
You don't see that. We don't know what we're getting.
Well, I understand that. I get it. That's why I'm saying, I, I, there needs to be a planning discussion on that topic. It's my suggestion.
And I have to ask about the sidewalks.
It's very hard to do that at the deus on zoning approvals on an ad hoc basis. It's just difficult.
We, um, we, we, you know, I keep catching missteps on the trails and sidewalks and so when I'm not comfortable, I just have to bring it up until we get our, our, whatever we're gonna call this person in place that has their eyes on all these things.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I usually reach out and poke you about five days before the hearing to say, these are mine. Take a look at them and let me know if you have questions.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Perry, is this on your list for Friday?
Specifically, not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet, no. Uh, right now, our Friday land use roundtable meetings are targeted to our conference of plan update itself.
Well, this conversation, I think.
Yeah, some of it, it'll be a topic that will come up, though, and we will talk about it. We can have extra Friday meetings, meaning Monday through Thursday, to, to talk about it with, uh, different stakeholders.
I think he's saying it's not on the current agenda, but it will be on a future agenda.
Yeah.
It's acknowledging that the conversation's gonna be that.
Okay, we, um, we finish with the P seventies, uh, entertain a motion. Move forward.
Second.
Got a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passed four-zero. Live on to P seventy-one.
Okay, P seventy-one was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Is, is there anyone?
There are individuals signed up for this.
Individuals signed up, so are they against this project?
Yeah.
Do you want a presentation first? Do you want a presentation?
Yeah, well, presentation first.
Good afternoon. William Vermillion, Planning and Development. Uh, this is item P seventy-one, Cherry Hills West MPUD. Uh, PDD twenty-four seventy-seven twenty-six. Uh, this is a general location map in the county where this project is located, right outside of Date City. This is a zoning amendment from agricultural residential to master planning development to allow for a maximum development of one hundred and sixty single-family detached units on approximately thirty-four acres. It runs alongside VFW Road approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet south of County Road fifty-two. Here is the aerial location map. The existing zoning map showing AR. The future land use map indicating RES six. Here is a contextual map to show the overall location, the subject site and its proximity to Date City, Saint Leo and that school there on County Road fifty-two. Here is the master plan for this development. You'll notice the, the VFW will not change in any way. It will not change along with this development. It had its club license and alcohol license approved by the Board of County Commissioners in nineteen seventy-five, and that runs in perpetuity with the VFW. Utilities for this project will also be provided by Date City. And with that, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions from Planning and Development and the Planning Commission. Are there any questions for me?
Who's, who's providing utilities?
Uh, this will be Date City. They're in the Date City service, uh, area. And prior to site plan, they're gonna enter into agreement with Date City to make sure they have all the capacity.
What are the neighboring lot sizes?
So the neighboring lot sizes. There are, will we zoom out here? Uh, across the street, you have Abbey Glen, which is fifties and sixties at a higher density that's proposed here. That's right under six dwelling units per acre. This one comes out to be about four point six nine dwelling units per acre. Uh, additionally, uh, you can't see it here, but to the east of Date City, there's another development uh, that comes in at seven hundred dwelling units on approximately one hundred and fifty acres, which is also roughly four point six dwelling units, and that's also your forties, fifties and sixties.
Okay, I have a question. Ms. Waveman, do mine?
Go ahead.
Um, so where is this in relation to the Orange Belt Trail?
Uh, this is, uh, east of.
No, I think the Orange Belt Trail comes into Saint Leo and then turns up fifty-two.
I understand, but I think, I think this is east of Happy Hill Road, if I'm not mistaken, on County Road fifty-two.
Right, so that, that's Smith Road right there running parallel to Saint Leo and then Prosser Road is your other north and south that connects to County Road fifty-two.
I, I really need to see that as part of the application. I think we, we need to have that to be on the application. Where is it in proximity? Where is it in proximity to the, to, you know? Something as important.
This is on County Road 52, and it's east of Happy Hill Road, uh, Prospect Road.
This does not, uh, the Orange Belt Trail does not run along this portion of the development.
It stops on Happy Hill.
And it proceeds north.
So goes north?
Yes.
So are there no?
At Happy Hill it goes.
So are there no plans to continue along this road to the high school or anything? Or we're just gonna go to a regular sidewalk after that?
Well, right now, this is just the, uh, the two lanes on County Road 52, and it's only 100 feet of right-of-way right now, so I'm not sure how much.
I just, someone needs to start looking at this stuff, or, I mean, we need to have a plan, 'cause this.
We are looking at them, Commissioner, but this only has 100 feet. Uh, so if there's gonna be a, a larger application of a trail or sidewalk system, this would not achieve much of that network.
Well, you know what? I think the Orange Belt is wider, is, is, it's like the Pinellas Trail, right? It's, it's a wider trail. It's your main spine. But your feeder network to it, that, while it doesn't have to be as wide as that, it shouldn't be as wide as that, it should be more than a sidewalk, because people are gonna wanna get to it. So you just need to have some kind of plan along a road like that as development comes in. So I think it should be more than five feet. Do you have five feet right now?
No.
You have nothing?
It would be required by.
Nothing?
Yeah, it would be required by the Land Development Code. As it exists now, there's nothing, because it's just that two-lane road, and there's a pretty substantial slope on each side of the road that's being used in for any interest. There, there's no.
Well, I think you should get, you should have an opportunity, you should get some land for an opportunity, so you're ready when it comes, when that opportunity comes. I see your county engineer walking up here.
Well, the, the part of that, uh, 52 on the north side there is, is sloped. There's no land for a, for a walk.
So this is, so it's walkway on the south side?
Possibly could be sidewalks on the south side.
I mean, otherwise, any kid that lives in there is gonna have to drive to school, or, or how are they gonna get down to St. Leo Commons? You know, is there, you need some kind of mobility on the side of that road. You don't want people in the, in State Road 52, County Road 52, walking or riding or pushing a stroller or whatever.
Yeah. That's something we're gonna have to take a look at, 'cause there's nothing from that point on and toward the high school. After the high school, there's some sidewalk, but nothing. I'm not sure, there may be some sidewalk at, at the fairgrounds.
I, I think you're right. At the fairgrounds, there may be some.
And that would be on the south side of 52, County Road 52.
Question? Chair?
Question, yes.
Thank you, Chair. How'd you come up with RES 6?
I, I didn't come up with RES 6. The comprehensive plan did. That's just the, the current future land use for this area is residential 6.
I mean, that's, I'm not. That's, that's not what the neighboring properties are throughout here, is it?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I just mentioned the, those neighborhoods that are at a higher density or equal density, just on the same road as this, as well as the surrounding areas also RES 6.
There are some smaller home lots there on that route, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You got Date City right on the border of it, and we've seen what they've done.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna annex it and sell all the dirt off.
And put, put more density on it as well, so.
We need to have a discussion with them, by the way. Did, um, did you, did our county engineer wanna say anything? Or?
This is all RES 6. Is that the only designation that's being shown?
Good afternoon. Nick Uren, county engineer. Uh, we're in the middle of the PDNE study for the Orange Belt Trail, so we definitely want to construct a facility that'll provide the connectivity that you're envisioning, uh, but we haven't nailed down any of the details yet.
Yeah, so if we approve this without any consideration of making sure we have something on the north, we've shot ourselves in the foot. So I would wanna make sure that, I, that the, that we have something. What, so?
See, to your left is the, is the north side, to the right is the south side.
And there's, there's a sidewalk there, and then what? It just stops?
Well, it runs across that business right there, which is not a busy area there. I don't know where the, does the sidewalk continue on down the road? Do we know?
It's okay.
Doesn't look like there's any there.
No, there's a little one. It's the old-fashioned forefoot.
Okay.
And I, I think that should be improved.
So that goes down probably to that station I'm seeing up on the right? I don't know if it goes past. There it is. Yeah.
So, so.
So it's on the south side of County Road?
Well, I see one on the north side, too.
Well, probably where it can be like that, it is, but then where it's really sloped, there's no room for a sidewalk.
So I just, it's just kinda calling out that what's the plan? And so we need to know what we want that to look like in the future, and just slowly arrive at our vision.
Well, that sounds like, from what Mr. Uren says, that we are doing the PDNE study to figure out where we're going to align said trail, and we don't have that answer today. Um, but, you know.
Okay, but I don't think this is where we talked, I think the Orange Belt turns north before here, on the proposed alignment, is that right? No, it doesn't go up Happy Hill, now that I'm thinking about it.
I think it's on this court, on the north side. I, I think the PDNE right now envisions it being on the north side of County Road 52.
Yeah, I think it's on the north side here, actually.
Well, PD provides options, right, and alternatives, so it may or may not until the board finally adopts it when, when it's complete, so.
Well, I'd love for it to go into San Antonio. I think the people are gonna ride there anyway, but, um, I just think that when developments come in, they need to show proximity to, even if it's the proposed route, so that we, we're not hurting ourselves. You know, we sold off, we sold off that railroad right-of-way that we should never have. And I asked it to stop, and apparently some were still going through, so, um, I think Commissioner Mariano wants to say something.
I'm just gonna say, it's gotta be, what, a five-foot sidewalk, sidewalk now, or four-foot?
It's four-foot, I think, if it's an old kind.
So, I mean, it looks like there's asphalt out in front. I don't, I don't see there's a big deal for that 100 feet, just, just ask them to put an eight-foot in.
Yeah, well, just, just even reserve the right to get it if we need it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
The applicant said that they're fine adding a condition reserving that right for that, for the eight-foot on the, specifically on the part along County Road 52 that they control.
I think the Orange Belt's wider than eight-foot, but anyway.
Be a long time for this other case.
If, if it's an additional eight-foot to a four-foot, then you got the 12, so.
Were you questions answered?
Yeah, that was my question.
Let me make a motion for approval.
People signed up.
Public comment.
We got people signed up to speak.
You got applicant presentation, you got.
Okay. Go ahead with the.
Do you want the applicant first, or?
Yeah.
Applicant first, yeah.
Thank you. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn. I am the applicant's representative. We obviously support the staff's recommendation of approval, as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, and all of the conditions, as well as the additional, um, condition that was just added. We have no issues with that. Um, but I am here to answer any questions. I know that we do have a couple residents here that have some questions that live, you know, down the road, so I'm here to answer questions, and so is our traffic engineer, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you have two individuals signed up. Mary of McKnight, then followed by Irene Losat. Um, and when you come to this, the podium to speak, please state your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn.
Yes, I have something I hope to, that you will approve to receive and file.
Approve to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can hand it to the class. Thank you.
I have been sworn in. My name is Mary McKnight, 36210, St. Joe Road in Date City. Before the November 2nd Planning Board meeting, at which this project was passed, there had been no valid proof that a public notice sign had been posted on Cherry Hills. I want Cherry Hills heard again by the County Planning Board to allow citizens a chance to voice concerns, because if they hadn't known about the project, how could they have come to speak? Last October, I traveled up the VFW Road. Uh, Date City had mentioned that Rolling Hills 2 was under the planning process, and I know finding access points can be an issue. So I assume that Erin Liggins was trying to find another access for one of her projects contiguous to this. But on that visit, I noticed there were no public notice signs. I called Mr. Vermillion to say that Erin had failed to post any signs, and I was totally surprised when he told me that Erin Liggins was not involved at all. Now, I was surprised, because the folks at the VFW said they were selling Erin Liggins the lot across the street. Beacon Civil Engineering did the plans for the project. She is their registered agent. The entity requesting the plans for Cherry Hills was Quill 115, for which Erin Liggins is also the registered agent. Now, she has every right to be involved with this project, but her name is strangely absent from the paperwork. At any rate, the neighbors said they'd only heard about this project from a Facebook page. Mr. Vermillion produced a copy of an affidavit attesting to the fact that the signs were indeed posted. The top page of my handout to you shows this affidavit. At the top, it says Laurie Burcaugh, authorized representative. I assume the county has documentation showing that the named applicants, the VFW and the trust, have indeed made Laurie Burcaugh their authorized representative. Secondly, there's an X under the attachment section indicating that a photo of the sign was attached to this affidavit as proof of posting, but no photo was attached. Now, this is the most disturbing part to me. The notary of this affidavit was Erin Liggins. Florida statute explicitly stipulates that a notary public may not notarize a document of a spouse. Laurie Burcaugh is Erin Liggins' spouse, nor can she notarize anything for which she has a financial interest. She did both. This rendered the affidavit totally invalid. This was pointed out to Mr. Vermillion. As I understand it, the county asked Beacon to provide another affidavit, one that was properly notarized. Right-of-way, a sign did appear, and Mr. Vermillion received a photo of it, although it has been faced down on the ground since that day. This all occurred after Cherry Hills West had been approved under the Planning Board consent agenda. One last paragraph. I ask that the process be started over at the Planning Board stage. Not one person may show up, but that is not the point. The point is that this board shows citizens that it respects their right to proper public notice, and that the commission demands integrity and professionalism from all stakeholders.
This is not your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
All right, Irene Losat. Again, as you approach the podium, name and address, and state whether or not you've been sworn.
Irene Losat, 36654 Opportunity Way. I actually am one of the neighbors.
Have you been sworn?
What?
Have you been sworn?
I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I am actually one of the neighbors that lives in one of the neighboring, uh, right around the corner from this development. I don't necessarily oppose this, uh, project, however, I have to agree there was no notice. Um, I spoke to Vermillion several times about the noticing issue. Um, I was one of those neighbors that saw the post on Facebook showing that there was gonna be a planning board. Um, there was no sign. I drive by that, the VFW, every single day to go back and forth to work. There was no sign. The minute that I mentioned it to Mr. Vermillion, the very next morning, I spoke to him, and I said, "Did you happen to speak to, um, the applicants?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "Well, 'cause now there's a sign." The sign appeared the very next day after he spoke to them. That sign is today, still laying on the ground. Um, the problem that I have with this project is it's so congested in that one area, with Abbey Glen across the street, you've got Heritage Hills on the other side, you have the Sheriff's Office substation right there, the forestry department, us trying to get in and out of our, uh, neighborhood, you've got the fair, and you've got Pasco County, uh, High School. All of that, there are times when the fair or anything is going on at that time, we will be sitting there for an hour or more, waiting to be able to get into our road to go home, after we've worked all day. Adding more in that area is, it doesn't make sense to me. Um, another thing is, um, if this is to be approved, we are requesting, or I'm requesting, that the stubouts be removed, that something in the documents would require that the stubouts from Cherry Hill not be allowed to go into the subdivision of Rolling Hills.
Well, that, may, may I? Well, it's in our comment time. I'll speak after.
Because we have a legal easement that is our ingress and egress, that right now it's on appeal with the, uh, city of Date City. So that has not been decided as of right now, so rather than, we would just like to eliminate those stubouts, so we wouldn't have the traffic coming through our easement that is our ingress and egress that's on our deeds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to speak to this item? See, no one applicant come forward on it? Got a question?
And I'll have a question after.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there's someone here that raised Vermillion.
Oh, I didn't see him. Come forward.
Can you give your name and address, and state whether or not you've been sworn?
John Kerewak, 15925 Green Glen Lane, Spring Hill, Florida, 34610. I just happened to notice.
Have you been sworn?
Yes, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just noticed, um, according to, and I could be wrong, uh, but 158.185, purpose of an MPUD, uh, shows a requirement of 50 acres. I just noticed this acreage was 34, so, um, I just wanted to point that out. It looked as if it didn't meet the requirement for an MPUD.
Is, I don't have an answer for that.
Denise.
Well, thank you.
Denise, can you answer that?
Is there anyone online?
Yeah, was there anybody in there?
No.
Okay, applicant. I'm just curious, uh, is this a for-sale housing development?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is it a for-sale housing development, or is it rental?
Um, I don't know that there's an end buyer right now, um, because they haven't even, I mean, they're just going through the MPD process, just like, you know, the other developers, so. Um, I don't know that there's an end buyer for this property right now, but it is a mix of the 40s, 50s, um, you know, lot size, which is what this area is developing out around. I did, actually, I do have a, um, exhibit, if you wanna see it, that kinda shows you all the stuff that's going on around this property, but immediately.
I'd like to see the connectivity of the roads.
Immediately adjacent to the property is, um, Rolling Hills 1, which is in Date City, and that's, I, I think William mentioned it, it's a 700-unit development with 40s, 50s, and 60s villas and townhomes, so. Um, and they have access coming out on County Road 52.
Are they, are they rental?
Uh, no, we don't have, it's, uh, well, ours, the, who is potentially buying that property. But we, that, there's no, we haven't closed on that property yet, as far as Rolling Hills.
So one of our rules, and, you know, th- this is where we get in trouble, when people say, "Don't let them connect," then everyone is out on 52, and no one can go anywhere. So we have to have connectivity, um, between, and a grid system around communities, so what is the grid system around this?
So Rolling Hills, right now, on the conceptual, or not, I'm sorry, um, Cherry Hill, on the conceptual, you can see that, um, we have stubouts to the north, or to the east, to the west, and to the south.
I, I only see this. I don't have anything else.
Yeah.
It's on the MPD plan.
Oh, yeah, that was that, that other one, right? That was Jones.
The stub out to the east that will go into Rolling Hills 1, which is that development I was just telling you about, they have access going out to County Road 52, and that is going to be a signalized intersection. So you'll have that access, which this will then be able to connect to, as well as the access that it will have on County Road 52.
Okay, very good.
And then, of course, you have the western Happy Hill.
That road that's at the top of it, it just goes to the property line, there's no arrow? What is that?
The road that's on top of-
The north, so, see what that arrow is that goes to Rolling Hills Annex and to Dade City?
Yeah, and that would be to the east.
There's a road to the north of that?
Yes.
It has no arrow? Does that go, does that, is that a road that will one day maybe continue?
Yeah, it will continue, it'll be connected into Rolling Hills, and then Rolling Hills comes out on State Road, or on County Road 52, at a signalized intersection about a half a mile west of the, or east of this primary.
Okay, and then the one connection to the west is future roadway there. Okay.
But the, the access to this goes through another neighborhood?
No, so we have access on County Road 52, which is what's shown right here on this MPD.
The one to the north, okay.
Yeah, but the staff did request that we provide stub outs to the west, which you can see that one-
You have to do that.
The east, which, the east is where Rolling Hills is, and then to the south. And that east access actually will, that, that Rolling Hills, which is in Dade City, that development, that PD, actually has another connection, is signalized out to County Road 52. So you'll have that, and then you'll have Happy Hill, so you'll have, you know, breaks in the signalization, but that is the plan, that there will be connection with there, with that other development. There was a question about the affidavits.
Yep.
I didn't do the noticing, but the affidavits have been provided. We did confirm with staff. The pictures were provided. My understanding from one of the residents who just came up to me while I was sitting there, I guess someone keeps pulling the sign down, and he keeps putting it back up, one of the members from the VFW. So, but the posting, the affidavit, everything was provided as, you know, as stated. So I don't know why they don't-
Do you guys have to take a photo of it when it's put up?
They did, yes. The, my, Beacon Engineering did it, and they did provide the county a photo of it. As long, along with the affidavit saying that they did their mailing. So I'm not really sure why the assertions being made that the noticing wasn't done, but everything I'm seeing in the county's-
Was this project presented to Dade City?
No, it was not. I think we've talked, I think there's been, let me reiterate, let me, let me restate. I think we've had conversations that this has been talked about in relation to Rolling Hills-
Right.
-and that we have it with the county, but no, we didn't, we have never submitted anything to Dade City for this development.
I heard different, but that's-
Yeah, no, we haven't.
Right.
It's right on the boundary, but no, it's always, we've always been in the county on it, so.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted that, to talk about the importance of connectivity, because if every neighborhood only had 52 to move around in, it would be a parking lot. So we've made the mistake before where we canceled the connectivity, but it's much better if you have as many as possible for everybody. If there were a crash on 52, and you had to get, get somewhere, you could go through that. You know, we had a crash on 54, or we had a truck dump oil, cooking oil on 54, and no one could go east or west, because there's no road going east or west, but stay road 54. So no one could get home, no one could get to businesses, they lost, it was a disaster.
That's when it all fell on the road.
Yeah.
I think that was the only issues or questions, was the public noticing, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions, though.
So was it corrected about the notary, and it's a fact that a notary can't, can't notarize a, you know, a-
Yeah, my understanding is that is correct, and ultimately-
Is that still the way it is, I mean?
No, they fixed it. My understanding is that when it was brought to the county's attention, they had the applicant go back out and fix the affidavit, and they had someone else notarize it. But the posting as required for noticing for the public was in fact done, so. And they, they did provide that proof to the county staff.
I don't, I just have an uneasy feeling about this project for some reason, so. Yes, sir. Mr. Waitman?
Based on the variety of reasons that were talked about here today, I'm uneasy about 160 units, 34 acres, no connectivity, then everybody bottlenecking out 52, which is a project with the development across the street. I'm just, I'm not sure if the densities that are proposed here are the right fit. And I understand Commissioner Mariano's point about the city of Dade City annexing it in, and what they, what they would, what they would put on there, so it's kind of like, we're at a cut, and then the connectivity point, Commissioner Starkey?
No, it needs the connectivity, yeah. It's got a lot, it's got four.
Always cutting the deck here.
If you see the exhibit, and we put it up, that identifies all of the existing surrounding development. Like I said, Rolling Hills 1 is 700 units, 50s, 60s, townhome villa. I know that Abbey Glen's got 40s in it, and Rolling Hills 2, which is pending with Dade City right now, is going to be similar to Rolling Hills 1 with regards to the lots and the mix of uses.
I, I, I'm concerned that this board making a decision today would compound Dade City's potential problem.
Where is Happy Hill on this?
It's to the west of the property.
Is some of you, the Dade City one, where they took off all the dirt?
Yeah. So there is, and actually, if you look at the larger aerial, I don't know if there was an aerial in the PowerPoint, but if you look at the larger aerial, you can see that this area is kind of surrounded by all this approved development that's coming online. So it's actually kind of an infill with regards to what's actually going on, you know, going to actually physically be going on, on the ground around those properties, around this particular property, so it kind of sits in the middle of it all.
So our, our minimum lot size, we adopted the rule, it's 45 feet, with sideboard setbacks at, what, 17?
Dade City's is 50.
Uh, good point, Chair. When, when was this committed? Because this project doesn't even seem to be compliant with our, our rules.
Um, it does have the condition in there that the board adopted. I don't know when, when Beacon filed this particular project, but it does actually have, if you look at Condition 37 and 38, it actually has the county's position with regards to if we go above 50% on the 40s, that we have to actually do the, the rearload, you know, all that good stuff. Those conditions that you guys require are in the actual approval, so we are compliant with-
That would be a question for staff.
This project received first round comments prior to the PM 26 memo coming out, so they weren't subject to it. The conditions that we did have from it are the overall lot standards for the 50-foot that we saw, but they still were able to get the 40-foot lots because they got those first round comments prior to the PM 26.
Okay, this, who's going to provide water and septic to this, to this project?
Yes, that'll be Dade City.
Do you have that approval? Because the reason I'm asking is, right now, Dade City has cut several projects off their list right now, and put them on hold, because they do not have capacity for, for sewage or, or water at this time.
So Rolling Hills 1, this, this big development next to Cherry Hills, this one, we actually have the capacity reserved. We have, we've already done that. We have our approved USA with Dade City. We're one of the few big developments out there that do. So we have that capacity, so I've had conversations with the city attorney, depending on timing, when this thing would come online, you know, whether we could potentially pull from some of that Rolling Hills capacity, you know, and, and work out some type of a situation like that. But right now, we have service to the property adjacent, and so there's potentially for us a little bit more capacity to get ahold of than maybe some of the other developments that are dealing with that right now. But I am, we are aware of the issue, for sure, with regard to wastewater.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make it for the record, since it's being discussed, the only record our office has of the advertisements is being advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on October 18th, 2023, and it was advertised for December 5th, and it was continued from that meeting to this meeting. So I just, that's the only thing our office has of, of proof of advertisement.
Right.
Just so you know.
Okay.
Will, does, does the staff's file have revised affidavits of, of posting, and the other issues that Ms. Johnson has indicated have been revised?
Yes, absolutely. We have the revised affidavit as well as the photo of the sign posting.
You just didn't provide them to the clerk's office?
No, so I made this agenda packet prior to receiving the direction to include those.
Okay.
And I, I have them in the staff file on the G-Drive, and we can pull them up on the screen if you guys would like.
As long as, as long as the county has them in the official record?
Absolutely. We also have copies of the certified mailings.
So you will provide them to our office?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't know, I still have an uneasy feeling about this, this property or this, this position. Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. You know, something's going to happen here, whether the city of Dade City annexes it or not, so I think it's the best interest of the county to make the right decision here. Based on the number of units, I think we might consider, I'd be willing to make the motion to continue this item, maybe reconfigure the lot sizes on here, maybe move to, you know, the minimum lot size in the 50s, and keep your, keep your options going on up from there, and then, then bring it back once we see something that might be a little less dense than 160 single-family units on 34 acres, right, without any connectivity.
Shelley Johnson, again, just, just for the record, if, in fact, you want to require all 50s and no 40s, I don't think my, my client will have an issue with that, so we'd be fine with that.
I'm not looking to go all 50s. I'm looking to keep the variety, especially the large lot sizes. I'm not looking to, to have one product type here, and I think the board's kind of-
You want to do 50s and 60s?
I think, whichever, I'd say we give, move, make a motion to continue, and they come back with that type of direction from us, and we see again.
Yeah, I'd like a little more time myself to look into it a little more.
That's fine, we're fine with that, if you want to continue it. I have no issue with that, we can talk a little further about it.
Is there a specific time, or we want to do a time certain? Would we continue it to?
I would, you, do it to a time certain, the next, next Dade City meeting would be February 6th. February 6th at 1:30, or sooner after, I'd say maybe here.
I wouldn't wait, because you don't want to be part of Dade City. Don't go past that.
So-
I want Dade City to annex it.
Do I make a motion to continue, you said February 6th?
February 6th at 1:30 or soon thereafter, maybe here.
February 6th at 1:30 with a different plan, I guess you could say.
Let's continue if they've got the-
That's up to them.
All right.
May I say something? I don't know that that gives us enough time to meet the deadlines for the agenda processing for February 6th. I don't have the list, but I'm, I'm sure it's very, it's very soon. The next one would be March 12th, that, the next one that's on this side, after February 6th.
Why don't you just pick a number that's less than what they're, they've got, and let them figure out how to lay it out? So, what is it, 160 units?
They want 160 units of 34 acres.
So why don't you do, say, 130 units or something?
Why don't you let the developer decide?
Yeah, decide the mix of the size of lots, but just cut down, make it less dense.
I think there's other issues I want to discuss in that area, and I have concerns about it right now. So continuing would be better for me, so.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
And, I mean, I'll, I'll go with that, but I just want you to really consider, the borderline properties, Dade City, Dade City will hop over, they'll move over-
That's a roulette.
They'll probably go this through. If you don't approve it, even to what you want, whether it be 50s, 60s, without even stating a number yet, I think you jeopardize it going, especially now that we can't do it February, we've got to push it back further. They may get frustrated and say, "You know what? We'll just go do Dade City, we're done." I really think if you, if you really want to get the less density, now's the time to ask for it.
But I mean, they've got to go to Dade City to do that, so I mean, I'm okay with that, so.
Chair, which scenario, which scenario are you comfortable with, Chair?
I'm always trying my best to help you.
Yeah, March.
Well, thank you.
Are they talking to you or me?
Can Siri read his own surprise?
I was so fun.
If that's Siri, we're not talking to you. I'm, I'm good with moving it to March.
The first meeting, the first meeting in-
In March, back here. No, the second meeting back here.
So it would be March 12th, would be the March meeting in Dade City.
So made my motion to continue the item to March 12th, not here in Dade City.
Okay. And I'll second.
Discussion. Can I ask the applicant if they're okay with that date?
Yeah, we're okay with that date, so we can figure out how we want to lay it out.
Any more discussion, any more questions? Anyone else here in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like so? Hearing none. Motion passed for zero.
P 75?
Huh?
P 75?
I thought we didn't do it. I thought we did do it. Oh, okay. P 75.
P 75, Liam Devine, Planning Development. I don't know if you want a full presentation or to jump back to Commissioner Starkey's comments?
What, what questions?
This was about the sidewalks.
About the what?
Oh.
The sidewalks.
On which one?
P 75.
Yeah, but I don't, yet, I don't have them memorized.
Okay, no, it's okay. I can go over it. PDD 24-7752, in the name of BMC, 31722, State Road 52 LLC.
Oh, yeah.
Do, do you want a presentation?
No, I just want to make sure that we're going to be able to have mobility other than a car.
Yeah, so, so what I, I think the orange belt question was already answered by Terry Petos, that it's going to be on the north side of 52. For your question on if the developer would be wanting up to an eight-foot sidewalk, I'll let the developer answer that question, the applicant, but I will note that the project to the west, which already has approved site plan, which is an MPUD, is Leo at San Antonio, that already has a site, approved site plan, and that already has an approved five-foot wide sidewalk. To the east is under, which is a, let me show on here so you can see. To the east, that's currently not highlighted in, to the red, that is a MF1 zoning district that was approved probably two years ago, and that is currently under site plan review, and our reviewers have commented that they are required to put a five-foot sidewalk as well. So there will be five-foot sidewalks on either side. So if you require an, an eight-foot here, there would be an eight-foot by itself connecting to two sides.
Do we want, do we want to talk to, is that that mixed use that Mr. Landis is involved in? There's two nice projects coming in there. Is this, this, this rental, is this the rental community that's like a village?
To the east?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a rental community, but it is villas that connected city, it's within the connected city boundaries.
I think it's a built-to-rent.
I think so, but I'm not 100% sure.
Where's this at?
And it has a lot of, and it connects, there's a commercial to the west on that corner?
I, I don't know. I know that there's commercial components to the Leo at San Antonio, so I'm not sure, but the MF1 doesn't have commercial. That would be to the east.
So I just, I just think we should be trying for eight-foot minimum, and just, I think we should ask for that, and if we don't use it, we give it to them, but until we, till we're a little further along, we should be asking for eight. Not, I'm not saying 12, but say eight.
So eight-foot wide sidewalks as a general rule is part of our standard section, because I know right now-
No, just, just until we, we know what's going on here. You know, two, two people pushing a baby's shoulder can't do it on a five-foot sidewalk.
Sure.
I think that's the minimum we should be having.
I mean, but there's a plan for a trail on the other side of the road, which would accommodate that, provided they can safely cross to go there, so I'm just trying to balance this out in terms of-
So where, where does it access here? Where's the trail coming in here?
I'd have to defer to staff on, I just know it's along the north side. Nick?
I'm just saying, where, where, I know it's a proposed route- I'm just saying, where, where, I know it's a proposed route, but can you put that proposed route up that you just sent a press release out on? Who's got that press release from last week?
I can describe it.
Because I don't, I don't have the Siri memorized. I know there, that it comes along the target.
The trail comes under the State Road 52 corridor, right here at this corner from the northwest. And then it would run along County Road 52 on the north side, all the way east across, across the property front.
And, and we're sure it's gonna be on the north and not the south?
Sure, until we present it to the commission in March for a final vote.
So your plan right now is to be on the north side, not on the south?
The, the recommended alternative is a 12-foot paved trail on the north side of County Road 52 within these limits.
All right, if you guys, if you guys are happy with the five-foot.
Chairman Marianna.
Commissioner Waite?
Intervene, Chairman Marianna.
May I ask the applicant to say anything?
Um, may I have Commissioner?
No, not yet.
We'll get to it.
I just want to have a question because, and we're supposed to be doing the audit on connected city, right? How much, what the entitlements are left and how much, only entitlements left are multifamily and it's high density. So because of that, I guess Ms. Willhite talked, but because of the volume of, of people and likely people on foot moving around, tend to kind of agree with the direction Commissioner Starkey's going, just because of the volume of potential.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Ritchie. This is an amendment to a voluntary deed restriction for a property that you already zoned C2. We are so far away from what you all are talking about with changing a voluntary, voluntary deed restriction on this property. In connection with the self-storage facility, we want to be able to have RV and boat storage interior to a self-storage facility. That's where, what we're doing. This is not a new zoning. This is so that we can have RV and boat storage interior to a storage facility. You've heard that both on our west and our east, you already got plans in for five-foot sidewalks, sidewalks. Your code says five-foot sidewalks. Denise said she's working on something regarding public, regarding neighborhood notices. Tell her to change the code, five-foot to something else. So we don't have to keep doing this each time we come up here.
Barbara, what is the commercial on the front of this storage facility?
We have to do, so in our deed restriction, what we already agreed to, to get C2 zoning, we agreed to a minimum of 10,000 square feet of office uses along our frontage. There's a whole list of them. We prohibited car washes, gas stations, drive-through restaurants, standalone recreational vehicle and boat storage, standalone. No commercial vehicles, no commercially related equipment. We agreed that our self-storage, we fit 250 feet back from the County Road, uh, 52 right-of-way. We agreed that we would do a stubout to the west to be able to accommodate golf cart and low-speed vehicle interconnectivity to the property to the west. And all we're standing here asking you to do is to change our voluntary deed restrictions. So you can have RV and boat storage interior to our self-storage facilities, which I own both, RVs and boats, and you need more of those. And the fact that you've got it where we've designed it now, that we're setting back our storage facility off of 52, putting a minimum requirement of 10,000 square foot office on 52, and then saying any boat storage has to be interior, you have overregulated this piece of property in a fine manner, and I think you'll be proud of how it looks. But to tell them now, after all of that, now your neighbors are gonna have five-foot sidewalks complying with the code. Because you want to change your voluntary deed restriction, now you have to do eight feet. I think that's just going a little far. But you can change your code, and if they come in for a site plan after your code gets changed, then they'll be eight feet. But I'd, I'd ask you not to do this to this applicant. They went way above and beyond. I haven't seen a deed restriction like this yet. To make sure that you were gonna have something quality on 52 next to the other project, which yes, that's Mr. Landis's project to the west. And that's why we have to have that golf cart connectivity to our office.
Well, I, I'd hate to, if, if Leo at San Antonio MPUD is willing to put an eight-foot sidewalk in.
They're, they're already approved. They've got construction plans.
I know, but just because they're approved doesn't mean they don't, I mean, are they already getting construction?
I have no idea.
And, and, and I guess this is kind of an county engineer question. Since that road changed from a state road to a county road, is there any room on that width to move some of that width to accommodate a wider sidewalk?
Right-of-way is the right-of-way, whatever it is.
Yeah, but can the lanes, is it a short, is it a slower speed? So the lanes don't need to be as wide? I mean, I just saw, just wondering if, if rules change in the engineering world for.
We're certainly willing to look into it, but, but I think your administrator is right. The, uh, design standards that we follow are consistent with the state's design standards.
I'm not sure that's what I was asking. Um, if, are there different design standards for a high-speed state road versus what should be a lower-speed county road? That's now a more neighborhood road, right? I mean, it's not, you don't anticipate same kind of traffic that, or speed that would be on Clinton, that would be on Old County, County Road 52.
Sure, that's correct.
So what is the speed limit on County Road 52?
Uh, depends on where you're at.
Will it change? I mean, will any of these people ever be able to get around a golf cart?
I would just caution you on that line of thought, Commissioner, because most drivers will drive what they're comfortable driving on a road. And if that was a state highway.
Well, that's why you narrow them down, right?
Geometrically, it was designed for a faster speed, I'm sure, and so drivers will probably drive. So, you know, to the county attorney's point, the right-of-way is the right-of-way, so.
Well, that's, that's my point. And I recall when we were having a discussion at the very beginning of laying out Orange Belt Trail and wondering if, since we're gonna have a new county road versus a state road, would there be right-of-way sufficient? And, I mean, we would want to slow down that road if it's more neighborhood traffic anyway, right? So a narrower road slows traffic down, right? So maybe there's.
There's some of that 45 now, I think, 40 and 45. Coming up to Happy Hill from Dade City on that road is, is slower.
You may want to have that road be no faster than 35 at some point, because then it can have golf carts on it.
But there are certain areas that are gonna, that slow it down. There's lights in there and around St. Leo, there's lights between there and Happy Hill and Prospect. I mean, there's.
I'm just, there's a lot of stuff coming in there. You may, you may have a lot more people getting around other than getting in their car and driving. That's my, that's my point.
Yeah, we just have to look into it because today we're in a state of emergency and we need to finish these items up so we can send people home.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Let's keep in mind, this, this, this site was designed to be a professional office. Now it changes to self-storage.
It's supposed to be what?
Professional office.
No, it was zone C3 is what it actually was zoned before. We changed it to C2 and made all these restrictions on it. It's already zoned. We already, only thing that you're being asked today.
This isn't, this is not a zoning action.
This is not a zoning.
This is, they're asking for their deed restriction to be amended because they had the deed restriction with the zoning. That's the only reason they're back before you.
Can, can I ask you a question? What, when did we start requiring boats and RVs to be interior? Is this a new thing?
Right here. If you approve this, this is, this is your precedent.
So is that what we're, and I'm, I'm not objecting to that, but I've never seen us do that before. So is that a new thing that we're requiring?
I, I think it was just sensitivity. Obviously, when you, if you look at the deed restriction, that was already imposed. There was a lot of thought by a bunch of people at the county, a group, group of folks at the county that put their heads together and said, we really want to make sure this area is done right. Put their heads together and they said, we don't want self-storage on 52, even though it's County Road 52. We want to see it behind. We asked the client to do a minimum amount of professional office. We don't even have, you don't even see that in Clinton districts. So, and then the question was, okay, with the self-storage ancillary to a self-storage facility, can we have RV and boat? And the decision with this amendment is yes, if we have it interior, so. That's the history of where we've been on this.
So I'm, I'm okay with this interior stuff as long as they, this isn't the only one that has to do it. I mean, it's the only one that.
Number one.
This one's got a lot, it's got a lot of things on it that they're the only one here, I mean, to do. You put in zoning and have a minimum amount of, of office on it, but.
Well, my, my point and what I was saying before was maybe there's a way to get to an eight-foot eventually out there without having, without taking it from them, but going towards a 52, State Road 52, County Road 52 side.
Sounds like it's not a matter of right-of-way. I mean, you have right-of-way. These sidewalks go in your right-of-way.
What is that, Chair?
But I have right-of-way for a five-foot, not an eight-foot.
Is that what your staff said?
That's what you said.
No, I, mine's about what I'm required to put, what we're required to develop in your right-of-way. And we're required, required by code to develop five feet in your right-of-way of your, of your, for your sidewalk system. And then we hook to it, but.
Guys, what do you want to do? Do you want to just leave it? I mean, I, I see Barbara's point. I just wish we had.
I think we need to leave it. We're.
Liam, if I may.
Okay.
Liam, your findings of fact say that this is, site is currently a professional office. Is that correct?
So currently what was on that site from the last rezoning about two years ago, and I can go to the finding of fact. I think that was approved March 7, 2023, was an office that was approved. That site was originally C3 and had one specific use, so that site could only be used for one thing. So nothing else in C3, um, and that was approved for a professional office for computers. So that would have been the only use previously in March 7, um, 2023. It was approved to C2 with the deed restriction, um, and then this would be amending that deed restriction.
And the deed restriction.
My client is agreeable to eight feet.
Eight feet of what? Oh, the sidewalk. Oh, thank you. All right, let's call Mr. Landis.
Communicate with him, sorry.
I'm glad that was stated.
They can easily, uh, they can easily get down to the grocery store and everything then.
Okay. Yeah.
Trying to get to the radar.
Commissioner, would you like to make that motion?
I would move to approve with eight-foot, um, with the ability to do an eight-foot.
Sorry, no, I was just going to clarify that would have to be in the voluntary deed restriction. That would have to come back. I don't know if it would have to come back or.
We don't want her to have to come back. So whatever we have to do today, we're done.
Figure out how we do that, but not back. We have a lot of items. Okay?
Does that motion?
You've got a motion?
Yeah, I made it.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Pass four zero.
78.
78.
P 78. And I hear the rumbling out there, so we need to. Try to get.
Hi, my name's Leanne McDonald with the Real Property Division. The Real Property Division received a petition to vacate a platted right-of-way filed by William J. Hart and William A. Hart Wagner. The petitioner seeks to vacate approximately 525 by 35 feet of undeveloped platted right-of-way. Purpose of this vacation is to adjoin the parcels together. Vacating the platted right-of-way will not adversely impact any other parcels. There is no objection to this petition and the team recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, this item was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times December 10th and December 17th, 2023.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I do not have anyone signed up for this item.
Is there anyone else here to speak to the site? Seeing none. No tip-in?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All of those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
For the record, you have three commissioners.
Well, but we have a.
That's a forum.
I know.
That's a forum. We're good.
Yeah.
And it passes three zero. Is something else I need to do?
Nope.
Okay.
Seventy-nine.
I know the quorum's at three, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. P 79 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, August 23rd, 2023, and by affidavit, with certified mailings and site postings.
All right. Commissioners, Denise Hernandez, planning a development. Um, this item was originally presented to you on October 10th, 2023. It's PDD 24CU02 for Pasco Land and Cattle Company LLC, Skyway Towers Verizon Wireless, for a 155-foot above-ground level monopine. Originally, it was submitted as a monocle, um, wireless communication facility in AR1 District, which is located in central Pasco County on the north side of Green Willow Run, approximately 2,000 feet east of Quill Hollow Boulevard. When the item was presented to you back in, in October, um, the board suggested to the applicant, and the applicant agreed, to modify the, the, um, the tower design for it to be a monopine, which I'll try to find the. So this is what the, generally the tower will look like. It will be a monopine. Um, the pole will be, will be painted brown and it will have fronds similar to what a mon, what a pine tree would look like, like pine tree fronds. Um, the applicant was also asked to see if he can work with the landowner to move the location to, uh, nor- northeasterly on the property. And it is my understanding from what the applicant has explained that the property owner has not agreed to that. However, this is the prior site plan showing that it's centrally located in the tower compound. Um, now the applicant has shown that it's located more northeasterly within the compound lease area. And generally on the parcel, this is the, the parcel, it's a rather large piece of property and it's located where this yellow dot would be on the parcel. Um, the applicant has also provided photo simulations showing what, um, the, they actually float up a balloon in the air and then they place the, the monopine where that would be. And this is facing north towards the proposed tower from Green, Green Willow Run, without the facility and with the facility. I believe the applicant may have a, a correction to this because the actual driveway, um, is, is in a different, um, configuration than what the one we're seeing today, right now. This is on the left without the facility, on the right with the facility. The facility is, is up here. Then again, facing northeast towards the tower to the proposed location from Green Willow Run, without the facility on the left, with the facility on the right. This is facing west, without on the left, with on the right. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. Um, and I am here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Denise? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. The, um, I just want to confirm, uh, the applicant meant with our office and that they're, that they're going to keep the pot, the buffering out of their here, but keep the buffering in the mature pine, should it be approved? Keep, keep the density of those, of the existing pines and disrupt as minimally as possible and keep those there for as long as we can.
That a true statement?
She's looking for the condition.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking to see if there's a condition that specifically says that because in the past I have added conditions that say no tree shall be removed, but for the trees that are required to, for the compound itself.
Right, to go with that.
Um, and on this one, it does not state that. We can add that if that's the pleasure of the board and the commissioners.
I asked that too.
That, that was.
It's out of this guy's control, um, because that, he's only buying, oh, sorry. He's only buying that, or renting or whatever's doing that pad. And I think the trees in front of it are owned by the owner of the land. But if the owner of the land wants the income from the pole, then hopefully he will agree that, no reason to take that, those trees out. I also, um, asked if they could look at the driveway design so that when you're driving down the road and you look in, and if you guys met with them and you saw the visuals, they didn't put any screening on the front. And so, um, he said he could work with doing the design of the driveway. And so he said he could work with doing the design of the driveway and making sure there's plantings on the front of that as well.
But that would be within condition three, which is that they have to comply with buffering requirements of LGC. They have to, so that's a requirement.
But they didn't, they...
They didn't, right, in the site plan, that's shown, but that's not, they have to come in for a preliminary site plan in accordance to, with your condition number seven. So when they come in with the preliminary site plan, they have to show a minimum of a ten-foot buffer around the, the compound, so...
Well, they had, the way they had the front designed with the gate and the way the driveway came in, there was a whole area that was unlanced.
I completely agree that that's not consistent with the code. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions for Denise? If not, then is there anyone signed up to speak?
Advocate's presentation.
Oh, the applicant. Very good.
Mr. Carbala, are you with the, our EMS, like making sure, you know, there's tornadoes? Just want to make sure, when I looked, they're not here, they're, it's, it's sat in the other side of the county, but just, you know, make sure we're not sitting up here with a tornado coming.
Yeah, we are currently under a tornado warning.
Yeah, but there is one on the other side. So...
The people here, they got...
Someone's watching to make sure we don't have one pop up here?
Yes, we will.
Keep her from having...
Thank you, because I don't want to be on top of this building.
Activated the force field.
That's my name.
You can do wonders, that's... Yes, sir.
Hi, good afternoon. James Johnston with Shuffley Avenue, three hundred Central Orange Avenue. On behalf of the applicant, I've been sworn. I know we've got all the weather, so, and we had a full hearing back in October, so I don't want to belabor anything too much, but I think as Denise did, indicated, you know, after the, after the continuance, we did go back to the property owner to see if there's a possibility they were agreeable to moving our lease area around on the parent parcel, and they were not agreeable to do that. So then we, you know, are kind of left with our lease area and what we can do in our lease area. And so what we have proposed, the change is to try to alleviate some of the concerns expressed by the commission and the residents, we're to change to a monopine-type tower, which we think is consistent with the area from the monocle that was originally proposed. We moved the tower into the northeast corner of the lease area, and we know that this is not a, a great move, but it's what we control and it takes it from the closest property lines to what we can do in our lease area. We also created, as Commissioner Whiteman said, a no-clearing buffer area within our lease compound to not remove the trees, other than the trees we'd have to move or remove for the access road and, like, you know, the fenced area. And then we did change the driveway angle, and unfortunately, the photo sims that were submitted for the monopine included the old direct-in access. And so I just was, if I can put this up on the, on the, this was revised plan, and you'll see it has an angled-in driveway with the purpose of you don't have direct view into the, to the tower compound. You'll have the trees kind of in the front and the back of the angle.
Yeah.
So you can see with the, with the angled driveway like that to leave the, the trees to, to minimize view of the tower compound. And so those were the changes we were able to do in the area we control. I also, at the last hearing, there were some concerns raised about property values by some of the surrounding neighbors, so after the last hearing, we engaged Dave Talby with Lee Powerdy Incorporated, who is an MAI-certified appraiser, to look at the issue. And I know, again, we're trying to, to speed through these things, but I just wanted him to come up and introduce himself, his qualifications, and very briefly talk about the results of his study.
David Talby, Lee Powerdy Incorporated, six oh nine East Jackson Street, Tampa, three three six oh two, and I have been sworn. The applicant asked me to prepare a tower damage impact study. And what that is, is it's a study to determine whether or not proximity to a cellular communication tower is disruptive or damages property valuations. And I've been studying this issue now for nearly twenty-five years. I've studied four hundred and sixty-plus tower installations. I have yet to be able to find and support that a tower installation has any impact on the valuation of surrounding property. I've looked at rural property, undeveloped rural property, I've looked at urban, I've looked at single-family, I've looked at commercial, I've looked at monopine towers, stealth towers, monopole towers, self-supporter towers. I've studied them all over twenty-five years. Also, I like to point out or bring to your attention that I have interviewed nearly every single property appraiser along the west coast of Florida, starting up in the Panhandle and Calhoun, Jefferson, and Leon Counties, all the way down to Naples and Colliers County and over into Orange and Seminole County, and everywhere in between, including Lake and Pasco. Daniel Villa, who's a senior property appraiser for Pasco County, and one of his representatives, Chris Poe, I've talked to both of them on multiple occasions, Pasco County, as well as all these other counties, have never made a reduction in a property assessment due to proximity to a tower. So you have to ask yourself, with all the opposition, how can that possibly be? And the property appraisers do the same thing I do. We analyze sales and resales, and there just is no support that a tower installation will impact a property valuation. And I have a copy of my study that I can submit for the record.
I move to receive and file.
Second. Get into the clerk.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion passed four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, just to, to wrap up, I think it's, you know, it's important, your code provides, you know, in deciding where these goes, these towers go, to require first to look for co-location, which we did and we're not able to. Co-locate on any existing tower, there's no tower within, closest one is one point two five miles. I think the other thing your code does that's important is it recognizes the complexity of RF engineering and design of systems, and so under your code, it requires expert review due to the complexity, and this is the language from the code, due to the complexity of the methodology and analysis required. And so you're, you've had an outside expert look at this. They also agree with the Verizon RF documents that are submitted in the record that there's a need at this height in this area. So again, we would just ask that you follow the staff recommendation of approval, planning commission recommendation of approval, the outside, your outside experts' recommendation, and approve this conditional use. We're here to answer questions, and I know there's some people from the neighborhood, and so we'd just like a very brief time to come back up as needed.
It's here.
Thank you.
Getting pretty dark outside, yeah.
All right. There's no one signed up, but I'm assuming maybe in the public, since we're the last item. The public?
Oh, yeah. Is anyone there to speak to this item? Okay. Line up.
As you come to the podium, please give your name and address and state where the you've been sworn. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Merrill Frimani. I am eight eight one zero, Quail Run Drive, Wesley Chapel, Florida, and I have been sworn in. So on this first page, I wanted to start by showing the Verizon provided RF maps. This first page here is the current coverage, and this next page is with the added tower and proposed location. So on this one, this next page, this is where I wanted to provide a comparison of the two maps. I did this by doing both a digital and physical overlay to compare them, to show the borders of current signal and improved signal. What you can see here is, oop, what did I do? There we go. I guess I got to use this one. So right here and here, all of this is already covered by current towers, and I understand coverage is not the name of the game, it's capacity. Here and here are the only two additional areas from this tower placement here that would have benefit. What I want you to notice here is that this dead zone right here is Shenandoah of Saddlewood. And then on the next page, keep in mind, I wanted to show street names. So this is from Google Maps. This here is Shenandoah of Saddlewood. And then right here is where the tower is going to be for Green Willow proposed location. All these little roads right here, I wish I could zoom in, are private access roads that I want to draw your attention to. Keep in mind Shenandoah is still in the dead zone for where the tower is proposed to go. We're not saying no tower, we're just saying move it a little bit. Those private access roads are on three hundred acres of property. So what I wanted to show next, oh, thank you. So right here, these are all the access roads that even Google Maps can see. And then on the next one, do you mind zooming, zooming out again, although you can see it right here? This is on the survey that they even provided in the public agenda notes, showing that there is an access road. At the last meeting, they were mentioning they didn't think an access road existed where they could move the tower a little bit northeast and still have feasible, you know, ability to get to said tower, to maintain it, et cetera. I wanted to show in multiple areas that there is a possibility to access it. And then here, I wanted to show another issue with wetlands on this property. Now, keep in mind, both parcels are a hundred and fifty acres, they are owned by the same people that are out-of-state owners that do not live here. I wanted to show this on something that you guys were familiar with, that you see your maps, I've seen them used here, so that's why I use this one. These are the wetland areas, and this right here is that same access road. Here is where the tower is located. This access road is seen by Google Maps, by the survey, and your own program. There are all these dry locations here that the tower could be where it's not impacting us. I, I just, I've been trying to email this, and I keep missing internal dates apparently, and Denise has helped me and explained so much, so I really appreciate you. But my point is, is like, we moved out here to be more insulated from views like this, and we understand that they're making it a pine now, but just please consider we moved out here to avoid this, and I hope that this provides proof that there are other options and resources that are not being considered that would benefit everyone and mostly us who already live here. Thank you very much.
Name and address and state if you've been sworn.
My name is Stephanie LeFieu, and our address is two six nine two nine Coral Vine Lane in Wesley Chapel, and...
And have you been sworn?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. And I am a realtor, not an appraiser, but I am a realtor, and I did research online on National Association of Realtors website, and in speaking with an appraiser, they told me to research external obsolescence, and it's a form of depreciation caused by factors not on the property itself, such as environmental, social, economic forces. An example would be a garbage dump, cell tower, or graveyard, something that you can't control, and once that cell tower is there, then we've got that going on and affecting values. Homeowner can't reverse that, of course. Per NAR, the academic, academic research on the cell phone towers on property values impact ranges from two point six five to seven point six percent of the values of the homes. Of course, wildlife are more success, more sensitive, excuse me, to electromagnetic fields and humans. Some states require disclosure of cell phone towers or other nuisances. It would not be something that would be a benefit to us that live in the area. When you see it, especially when, when you're on the property and you see the, the cell tower around the home, it's less appealing for anybody. If you live there or you're thinking about buying there, you're going to get less. We find that homes closed to towers sell for a discount of up to seven point six percent, and that any noticeable effect disappears. Anyway, hold on. And it's perception of those effects that can impact, with it being potentially a health risk. American Cancer Society, they said it continues, it still needs to be looked at further, it has caused in rats, tumors in the heart, in different places, and they said it still needs to be looked at in depth with the effect of people, of course. So they said more studies need to be done. It's hard to say whether or not it's going to affect us physically and our health, but it's going to affect our values. And it is, it is not appealing to look out and see one of those tall towers anywhere near your house, especially in a downturn market. The negative impact increases to nearly seven percent, and nine point seven eight. And they polled, they spoke to people about the potential impact of a cell phone tower, and it states that purchasing or renting a property near a cell phone base station over a third or thirty-eight percent of the control group respondent said that CPBS would reduce the price of the property then more, by more than twenty percent. And it may, it may be that we have to disclose that cell phone towers within so many feet of your property, it could affect us in that way also, which would be detrimental. So I just propose that it be put in a place that's not residential. I mean, there's plenty of businesses around us, there's the Grove, there's, there's got to be a better location that won't be affecting us. We bought, we've been there for years, we've been there since oh eight, and it will adversely affect us. So we're asking for something else to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Name and address for the clerk, and if you've been sworn.
Sorry, didn't you?
Name and address for the clerk, and then if you've been sworn.
Yes, I've been sworn. Kelly LaMusca, two six two one eight, Green Willow Run. I will reside approximately thousand feet from this tower. I am certainly glad to hear the details of home value, that is one factor of this. The other is that I would like to see a future impact of this tower, because that's not been discussed in these meetings. Will Patrick County monitor this and keep Verizon to its original intent? We'd like to see the original contract and its extent of how long this lease will occur. Will Verizon rent their tower to other providers and not notify the community and saturate the community even further as more, with more bandwidth? Will it go to a higher bandwidth of ten G? What is its future impact with that? We are not getting any type of safety impact with this, and I am asking that the board please recommend this information for public review from Verizon and allow the community to have a state of addressment with that, because we've already decided at this point, as it appears, that this is already being approved, and all Verizon is waiting on is which design we desire. We in the public have not approved this, however, we are asking for more details, and in the meantime, I am a vote against it, so I ask that you reconsider some of the details you needed to further review this for insight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Name and address, and if you've been sworn.
Kathy Vance, two six four three five, Green Willow Run. Yes, I have been sworn in. I was here last time and talked to you, and I live right next door to where the tower is going in. It's fifty feet from my property, which is very upsetting. I didn't go into any of my concerns about any health, because I was, we were told at the very beginning, the health scares and the home values didn't matter because of FCC rules. Even with knowing that... Even with knowing that, I left here with some hope, because of the questions that commissioners asked Verizon. They wanted to know how this is gonna fill the gap, if there's going to be any more coverage, if, what all of the things were, if it could be moved. That hope for me was dashed yesterday, when the appraisers, not the appraisers, the surveyors came in in the afternoon to do the final survey and put permanent markers in on the property. I felt like, why am I even going to that meeting tomorrow? Because if they're already putting in permanent markers, they must know something I don't know. Then I started doing more research. And I found out about the high-pitched noises the cell towers emit. Then I started getting really nervous about it. Because since I was a child, I've had a thing with my ears that I can hear high-pitched noises that other people never hear. There are stores, jewelry stores, I can't even go in because of the noise. So I started being concerned about that. Can I continue for a second? So because there is no significant filling of the gap with this tower, I would ask the committee to please oppose it going in. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address and if you've been sworn.
Hi, I've been sworn in. I'm Tim Dunneffin, 26422 Green Willow Run in Wesley Chapel.
And have you been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn. Thank you. At the first neighborhood meetings that we had with Verizon last October 19th, or I'm sorry, August 19th, I asked if the tower would work, physically work anywhere on this 342-acre property? And their answer was yes, it would work anywhere on that property. So why do they choose this particular place to ruin and damage our neighborhood? It just doesn't make any sense. Why this particular spot when they've got so much land to choose from? Last meeting, October 10th, Commissioner Mariano said, let's take a three-month wait and let's let Verizon and the property owner try to come up with a different location that makes more sense, that would actually benefit people rather than harm people. Because we don't need the cell tower where we are. I've had great reception with my phone. My internet has been great for 20-some years. So this isn't gonna benefit the people that it's gonna harm the most. They say there's a, the tree line will cover it to where nobody will see it. Well, the tree line is at the most 75 feet tall. This is 155 feet tall. So the tree line's not gonna cover it at all, to be visible for anybody around. I'm also concerned with the weather, the hurricanes, the tornadoes. It's gonna blow steel through people's windows on their houses. And Verizon says, no, it just falls straight to the ground. Well, at 80 feet, it's gonna fall before it ever hits the tree line. And that 80 feet, can it blow into someone's house or yard? I would say so. And even if it's on the ground, well, what are we told every time there's a hurricane? Get everything off your property, so nothing's blowing through anybody's windows. Well, even if it's on the ground, what's gonna keep it on the ground? We've seen boats, cars with hurricanes throw them all over the place. I don't think they're gonna come out and secure that steel that's on the ground. They've also told us that they can add on to this. Yay. Five different more companies can come in and just add on to it, make it bigger and bigger, to make it even more dangerous for us. Why should we, the neighbor people here, why should we be forced to look at this monstrosity that benefits other people? It needs to be put somewhere else. It needs to be put somewhere where people need it the most. And where it's at now, it's not, not the place it should be. You know, the commissioners are for the people. Well, we are the people. And we need your help. We need you to vote this down or move it somewhere where it makes more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address and if you've been sworn.
Paul Formani, 27251 Wesley Chapel Boulevard Suite 102 Wesley Chapel. I have been sworn. I sent an email to all county commissioners last week. I'd like it to be received and filed.
Mr. Stiles?
Say it.
All those favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like say. Motion passed, four to zero.
I have one picture, because one picture speaks a thousand words. I'm a little confused myself, because of the last hearing, which I was here at, Commissioner Mariano suggested petition that they look elsewhere, either on the same property or in different locations. I even in my email proposed alternate sites that are even closer to Wesley, to Saddlewood, excuse me, because Saddlewood is who is benefiting from this, not Quail Hollow. They want to put a cellphone tower in Quail Hollow to benefit a totally different community because it's convenient for them. So why not put it next to Cypress Creek High School? It would be close to Saddlewood and it would be an income maker for the school board. Why not put it next to that monstrosity of a warehouse that still remains vacant to this day on Old Pasco and Blair Road? There are literally hundreds of opportunities for Verizon to put the tower closer to Saddlewood and get better reception for those citizens who want it. Verizon thought they could just pat us on the head and make a monopole a monopine and we'd all be happy. Well, I'm sorry, we're not happy. Most of us have lived there over 30 years. We moved there to get away from urban sprawl, to get away from the car washes and the Starbucks on every corner. We moved there because we could look at a pristine skyline and enjoy the wildlife in our area. So we treasure our open spaces. Remember that? Open spaces, vibrant places, Pasco County? That's why we moved here. And yet 30 years later, the argument is, oh, nobody's gonna notice it. We've got a tree line and it'll cover it. 155-foot eyesaw, a single-digit salute to the neighbors, above the tree line. That's what we'll be looking at every day when we wake up in the morning. So Skyway Towers will go back to their corporate offices. Verizon will go back to New York where they are based. The owners in St. Louis of this property will gather the rent. And we have to wake up every morning to that. If this were a courtroom, I would not be able to violate the court, the golden rule and say, how would you feel? But this is not a courtroom and you are not jurors. You're commissioners here to protect the rights of Pasco County citizens. And so how would you feel to wake up every morning to that for the rest of your life? Because I don't intend to sell. It's not gonna affect my value of property. And my property is contiguous to that property. So let's not change the motto for Pasco County from open spaces to vibrant places to the famous words of Joni Mitchell, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Because if you allow this, you're on a slippery slope, my friend.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Could we hear from applicant again, for a second, I have a question.
Yeah.
Could you put up the service map, please? Well, the one that shows where your, what the coverage is in that area. Didn't, didn't our consultant provide something?
The green and red.
So this is the challenge that we have, is that we, first, we can't go buy anything medical legally. And we hire a consultant that tells us where the need is. And I think that we have a consultant telling us there's a need there, otherwise you wouldn't be looking there. So.
Correct, Commissioner. You know, I think as it shows, the blue dots are existing towers where Wyoming is located. And so we're talking about, you know, as mentioned, coverage and capacity. And it's not just, you know, the coverage, it's how this interrelated system works together and how the towers offload from each other, which improve everyone's service. So again, I think as you were pointing out, Verizon doesn't go to put antennas where they're not needed. First, you know, they only go where their RF system says these are needed to improve their coverage and capacity. Then they look to see if there's an existing tower structure in that area where they can go. And if there's not, that's when they go, you know, for a new tower. And then you go, then they have, you know, site acquisition people who say, okay, within this area, let's find a willing, you know, properties that work, a willing landowner, and then find the location. So that's how we, you know, end up with where we are. And again, I think, as your code very specifically says, this is a complex issue. That's why you hired the outside consultant to review what our, what Verizon RF is saying. And your outside expert has looked at it and said, we agree that there's a need here at the height that is proposed. And if I can have a second, just to address a couple of the other issues that were raised, I don't wanna, I know some health issues were raised, I know we've discussed that before, that that's preempted by the federal government. I do think someone raised property values. And, you know, the evidence we've provided is an actual property appraiser who's not basing this just on an internet article, but who actually prepared a study based on this site, based on his experience with towers, and has come to the conclusion that these will, this tower will not negatively impact their property values. And I think that, I mean, again, we, we take the neighbors' concerns, you know, we don't take them lightly. We did go back to the property owner to ask about moving on the site. But based on that response, we're here with our site as proposed, with the, with the changes we proposed to try to mitigate impacts, you know, as best as we can on our lease area. So we would just ask for your support on the side.
Mr. White?
Chair, this is for the applicant. There was no conversation with the school board about putting the cell tower Cypress Creek?
Where is that relative to this?
Just north. Not too far away.
I think when, when they, when they did the site look for this, again, based on the search area where it was needed, they, they contacted 11 different property owners in the area. There were some limitations, gated communities they couldn't go into, conservation areas they couldn't go to. So they found 11 properties and received responses from two, one of which was a school. I don't know if it was the Cypress Creek High School. It may have been, but when, and so those two sites were sent to Verizon. And that was too close to other towers where it would not, RF chose this site because this would better address their, their needs and the coverage and capacity gaps. Whereas the other one was too close, I think, to other existing Verizon facilities where it would not provide the same coverage and capacity that was needed.
Where's the tower, where's the closest tower in relation to the high school?
Yeah, that's a good question.
You don't, I mean, you have a map. That showed.
I mean, I could, I have the map which showed.
Because that's a formula that has worked for a long time here.
I think what you're talking about is more to the east. Yeah, yeah.
Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. So regarding the closest tower near the school, is actually located at 8442 Old Pasco Road. T-Mobile is the anchor tenant, but Verizon is on that tire, tower as well. Excuse me.
Is that D on the map? Is that D?
It is a 260-foot tower, 8442 Old Pasco Road.
On the map?
On Wildcat Groves parcel. I could give you the parcel ID number and you can put it on and plop it up. But I'm using GIS on my phone.
Does our expert know? Is it D?
So it is southeast of the school.
Looks like it.
This is it. No, so it's probably D. It's right off of I-75.
Well, what's the distance from the school to D and from the proposed site to D? Do we know?
I don't know. I know the closest tower to the proposed site is over one and a quarter miles away.
So that would be D, but what's the distance between your yellow dot and B? Google Earth, you could draw a line.
Just trying to map it.
I guess my question is, what's the distance between? I historically support cell towers. It's the way our world communicates. It's the way it works. It's a necessary, unlikable thing in today's world. So what's the, how's it work? Is it by distance? Is it by how they bounce off each other? What's your formula?
And again, it's, it's like you have the surrounding ones and you try to go, you know, to be in the middle of those as best you can to, again, offload the other towers. So if you were on that tower compared to the high school right there, is, you know, Verizon's already on that tower, so it would really provide no additional coverage and would not address their needs.
If you built, if you put a cell tower on the high school side?
On the high school, correct.
Three of those.
But that was one of the regimented, that's one of the consultant sites? Or those are just our only options?
Those are the, those are the, what they do is they do an analysis. Can you, am I being picked up? My voice?
I do.
Yeah, we're here.
I just, I didn't think it was a few options.
So Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. So an analysis is done showing all the different towers that, that exist, that are existing and Verizon actually is co-located on or is an anchor tenant on. So that tower was used as a site that they, that they were on and that, you know, the, they need this particular tower. I mean, I'm not an RF consultant, but that's what the analysis says, that this tower is necessary. And I think they also do an analysis of another monopine that's like one point some odd miles from here, southwest on Edna Poche's property. That, that's probably one of the only monopines we have in Pasco County.
And I think they're on that as well.
Yes, Verizon is on that site as well. Yeah.
So again, it's filling in the system where you have the, on the outside and providing this new site and the inside to help, again, fill in coverage. and, and providing this new site on the inside to help, again, fill in coverage, but also provide the offloading of the other sites.
So my next question, if, if that's there, then as you go north up Old Pasco Road, what would be your next target site? Is there, do we know? Because there's gaps. As you go north up Old Pasco and you hit 52, if it's working off this ping net work, I'm trying to understand bigger, bigger picture of what we do to better, I guess it's kind of staff question, what we do to better coverage in general, not just this one, one particular spot. No answer yet.
I mean, I, I know just from Verizon's perspective, it's, they're constantly looking at it, and it depends on where customers are, where usage is, you know, so the, so the RF needs are changing, where, you know, what, what, what was appropriate, you know, way back when people only used their cell phones just for, for calling, you know, it's different now as, as we've moved forward with, you know, data, capacity, those issues. And that's why there's, there are additional towers needed to fill in and, and help stabilize that system and provide the, the coverage and capacity that are needed. And again, we, we think it's, it's helpful for public safety with all the 911 calls. You know, it's also utilized, Verizon's utilized by a lot of emergency management entities, and it's just, we think it's, it's good for, for the area to have good quality coverage and capacity.
I appreciate it. Like I said, historically, you know, cell town, cell, cellphone towers are unfortunately necessary as the way we communicate. I just like to be sure and confident that the cell tower companies have exhausted their opportunities or willing property owners to put, to put these towers on there. I just...
Right. No, I, I appreciate that, and they do. Because again, the easiest thing for them is to go on an existing structure or tower where there's no zoning here, and it's already been, it's already up. It, it's only when, they can't do that, that's when they have to propose a new tower.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I have the map that shows the before and after map? That shows the coverage change?
Bad weather's gone. That's what I said.
Well, isn't that the first band?
Well, didn't you see it?
Let's put them side, let's put them side by side.
That was splits after us.
Hmm? Want to fold it? I want to fold it? So when we looked at the one over to Plantation Palms, and we saw the coverage area down low where it was like thick up, when they changed this from the one tower where the sports field was to go north, we saw a significant change. I don't see a significant change here, especially direct where the core is. I don't, I don't know what the consultants do or how they actually go about their business, but if that's the limited amount of extra service we're going to get, I don't think it's worth putting it in. I think they need to do a better job to what's going on there.
Which color shows more service? The green or the red?
The green. But I think, again, it's coverage and capacity and the offloading of the other tower sites. So it, it's not just as simple as, I mean, as the main coverage.
And again, as simple as it is supposed to be, when you look at where that tower is, right above it, it like, there's no change. Around it, you get a little bit of a circle left and right, and that's it. So if that's the best you've got for the coverage that's there, I think you need to go look somewhere else. Maybe it is further to the right that you get better service. But for that, for these people to go through that, for that one miniscule improvement, I don't think it's worth it for them.
I mean, again, I, I'd say it's not a miniscule improvement. Again, it's something that has been designed, requested by Verizon RF, and again, reviewed by your outside expert.
And all the experts in the world still can, to me, show that that's the best you can do, especially when we've seen others do it across, across on 41, where they had two different towers to be put in place. They could show a bigger gap that made a difference. Even when we looked at the school site over on 54, it showed differences where it can go. I think you guys need to go back to the table, look for a better site.
I appreciate your guidance.
If, if you'll notice, the original leased property, they didn't change to the larger piece of property. They stayed on that lease, small lease property, so there's not much change from what you saw before.
And Commissioner Wilkley, we even have our own industrial property right on 75. Maybe that would even have an effect. I don't, did you reach out to us at 75, I-75, our own property?
On I-75?
On I-75, just on Old Pasco Road, between I-75 and Old Pasco Road.
It all depends on where the search area is, and we already have a tower...
There's already one there.
On 75, so we don't need one right over there.
I don't know if that's the same one, because that's, that's why the school, if it is or not, I'm not sure.
I'm just saying, we don't, we didn't need one right there. We needed one farther to the west, because we're already on the tower that's right there off of 75.
What is...
Okay.
What is to the west?
Pleasure of the board.
Is there any way I could say anything else about it?
No.
I move to deny it.
You know, it does seem that maybe, is there one on the elementary school?
Well, all on elementary?
Yeah. It seems if that were just a little bit more to the west, the east.
I, I don't know about that site, but I know there have been other, when elementary school sites have been looked at before, I believe I was in a meeting with Hugh Commissioner Mariano, where there was not support for putting towers on elementary school sites. Okay? Had a lot of criticism from the parents.
A lot of health and safety concerns. Ms. Chairman? So a lot of he, health and safety concerns come out from the people when we did down eternity. I mean, it's new information that has come out before. I guess the feds have stopped testing for rats, so we don't even have any current information. But even one of the residents here talked about being a beekeeper and how no bees go around the cell towers for the same concerns about what, what goes on with, what's being transmitted. So I mean, there is health concerns, which does affect property values, the location of the coverage, I mean, there's just so many negatives to this site. I, I wish they'd just go back out and go, go take a look again. I mean, we, we obviously want to see good cell coverage, but again, these people, I mean, even suffering for cell coverage issues. But I haven't seen anything that would compel me to say, this makes sense.
Yeah.
So my motion's still out there.
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion to deny.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear it, so I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Did we get a second to that? I see, I see a difference in coverage, and I'm all for coverage, and I've been consistent in that message. Everything goes 2-2, then it dies. I don't, I don't want to see an opportunity to improve cell signal, you know, passed by. I really, I really don't. I, and I always appreciate the residents and their concern, but again, it's, it's the way of our, our world, it's the way we communicate. We used to communicate via smoke signal. Thirty years from now, it might not, cell towers may go down, and who knows how we'll, how we'll...
Communicate through satellite.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I don't necessarily, I don't, I don't like it, but it's, it's a, it's a, a need that we need to have as a functioning society that communicates a thousand times a day, every which way, social media, however. So is there, is there any other opportu, have you guys exhausted every opportunity to find sites?
Not you guys.
For location here?
You guys. Comes down to him.
Yes. Yes. I mean, we, we scrubbed the area, sent out notices to different properties that were, were viable properties, only received two responses. And again, this was the response that worked for Verizon RF. So we, we have gone through that very laborious process to find a site that works for Verizon RF. And again, and I hate to keep belaboring the point, but, but that your expert, that you, you know, that you involve in this process, because it is such a complex process, the RF engineering has, has agreed with it and said we meet the code requirements. Tower in that location is needed at that height. So again, we would, we understand the concerns, but we'd ask that you approve this application. Thank you.
May I confirm that the property owner at this current site, they don't want to have it in any different location for one reason or another?
Correct. We did speak to them after the last October hearing to make that request as Commissioner Mariano had requested.
I will second Mr. Mariano's motion.
Well, I'm, I'm on the same page as Commissioner Waitman. There's never any great site for a cell tower, really. My house in Aristida, we back into the Wilderness Preserve, and when my, my son comes down, and now he's not even doing it anymore, to work with my grandkids, and he tries to work at my house, he can't do it. I, I'm sure, I have spoken to many of you where you say, I can't understand a word you're saying, and I have to go stand out on my driveway. So sometimes I have to get in my car and drive to the front of my street, my, front of my neighborhood, because we don't have, we have cell tower coverage. And so just last night, watching the football game, boom, frozen on a great play. So I, I, you may not, you may not have great service, you may have fine service now, but as more and more things come on the internet, the capacity just gets gobbled up. And, you know, there are times, if I had to, I have to have a landline, I have to pay for a landline. We can't go without it because of emergencies, in case we have an emergency. So I was looking at the neighborhood, and, and I, I get that cell towers aren't British. I worked on the first cell tower ordinance. We've approved this one a little bit, but, you know, we, we put in certain rules to try and make sure that, one, they have to be needed. When we first started, before we had the cell tower ordinance, you could put a pole, you look in Port Ritchie, there's a pole here, a pole here, and a pole here, three poles within 100 yards of each other. I mean, we, we tightened it up, we got rid of the guide wires for the most part, it's in the lattice. When we tried to make them as, as unobtrusive as possible, but the fact of the matter is, this is the world we live in. And so if that were in my view, in my yard, I would be planting a tree in that, I would be planting trees so that when I looked that way, if it was in, if it was in the view outside my, my living room or whatever, my pool, and I see most of those are pretty large lots, I would be planting a tree so I didn't see it. So that would... So I, I, I am not going to vote against it, I'm going to vote for it.
I'm going to call for a question.
So with that, if it's 2-2, then it dies. I really don't want to see the work that's been done here. I guess, I mean, could we move to continue, you guys? If it's... Well, if it's a 2-2, you're going to have to move to continue it until you have a full board, I would think. I mean, I...
Wait for Commissioner?
Because it, because a 2-2, which is, is voting on the denial, doesn't grant an approval.
Well, how about you get the vote?
No, I don't get to vote. Thank you very much.
It's, it's, service is, is warranted, and I appreciate the residents and their concerns too. If there's another way to go, I don't know who our county expert is, I don't think I've ever met, met with them, I don't know if anybody here has, knows anybody or county has, has a resource that can help the carrier out some way, somehow, to just maybe like we did at Starkey Park. We were patient, and we found another spot, and we, we accomplished our goal to get the signal in a carrier. I, this is necessary, we have so much coming in at, at Overpass, and in Old Pasco, we have the riding of the road. I mean, there's just a lot going on, and it's not going to get any easier to make the decisions as people move here. We're going to be forced to make these decisions, and they're uncomfortable, but they're necessary. So...
I've called for questions, so we have a motion on the side.
Can I make a suggestion before we call the motion?
Okay.
And just for, for the others. Maybe what we need to do is just give them clear direction, we don't want it here, go work harder, maybe they got to pay more money to somebody else to get more interest to, to get what they need to get for a location. But this is clearly not a big boost for a location. Let's give them a direction to go pick another location. Just tell them straight out. Like, don't go move a driveway and put some fancy bushes up that could go flying everywhere in a storm. Let's go pick, have them, just tell them to go pick another location.
You're probably right, because the fact of it is, if you continue...
Can you hear the same conversation again?
You'll be, you'll be talking about the same things down the road wherever you continue to, and...
But if you deny this application, you have to deny it based on your criteria for conditional use. So that's, so, so that's not, I don't want to see it here, and I want to see it someplace else. That's, it's got to, you've, you've got, you've got eight criteria for granting or denying a conditional use. We've already been through, the health effects is not one of them that you can use. Number two. You have the...
Number three.
You, you, you can make an argument that, that because of the rural character of this area, that it's not consistent with land use patterns. You've got evidence in the record that it doesn't affect property values, and you've got citizen testimony that it does, so... If, well, the landowner, the, where this thing is, the landowner has a right to say what, where they want, if they want that, where they want to potentially have it on their property. Seeing how this is shaking out, maybe that's what you need, go to that landowner and say, hey, if you want to do business with us, we need this spot, because this board's at a, I think we all understand we need it, but this board's at an impasse seemingly for this location. Maybe that's, that's what, maybe that's, you know, advantageous to the property owner who wants the income from it to, to make something work for them and work for, for the resident. Look.
Seeing the effort, they're not coming forward. Let's call the vote.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All, all oppose the motion, same side?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're, we're at a standstill or a 2-2?
That's a first. I would recommend...
Recommend we move it down route?
I, I, I mean, yes, I, I would, since we're at the standstill, I mean, if we can continue until there's a full commission, because we're clearly at a standstill, and that would also give us time, you know, to, to again, go back to the property owner as needed, you know, to tell them about, you know, what's been going on.
I think you have some real ammo here with this board, to say, hey, you want to do business with us, wouldn't, can we move it somewhere else on your, on your place? And they get a win, and the residents get a win.
I hope.
It comes the boss.
Okay.
So funny. It's just, I'm the boss of dates, okay? That's all.
So these are the options, because February's not going to happen, March 12, April, let's see, 10?
Let's say 10.
Okay. So I need a motion.
Does this have to go to the planning commission, then to us again?
No.
No.
No, that's just for us.
1:30 or soon thereafter is...
Second, can, can I also ask a question? If the, if the landlord does not agree to move it, can, is there a possibility to close it for public comment so that we could just get a full board vote? Because not to have to go through this whole...
You've had, you've had a public hearing, and it's, and it's been closed. If the site moves, I think you'd need to...
moves, I think you'd need to reopen public.
Okay. Yeah. I was just wondering if the site can't move.
If the site moves, you will.
But the residents still need to be, I'm like.
Well, if they move it from that site, it won't affect these residents.
If they move it from the site, they would, they could prob, they could comment, I would imagine. But if it's in the same site, they've, all the comments have already been made. It should just go for a vote. I'm, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud, just wondering. So that way, this is not like a one hour.
You've done that before. The board has done that before. If there, if there is no new evidence that is being presented and the public hearing has been closed, they can take a vote, assuming that Commissioner Bradford reviews the previous hearings and is willing to vote at that point.
Okay. So who made the motion for the?
To continue, I made the motion.
The date.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of moving it to, what is, what's the date?
April 10, 1:30. Date City, and that happens to be a Wednesday, which is weird. But just letting you know, it's a Wednesday.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor of moving to April 10th, 1:30?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Waitman? You vote? Okay. Okay. All right. So that's what it's done. So that motion passed for us. So, okay.
So where's that?
It continues to get later, so I guess the weather's going to get better before we get out of here.
The worst is past this house.
Huh?
I think the worst is one by us.
Oh, okay. So we still have R46 to cover?
Yes, you've got 46 and 141.
Oh, and 141. So we'll take R4, well, what is, we require a vote on 141?
We finished. They're both regular items. Land Development Code amendments, proposed land development code amendments that were bringing, brought to the board for discussion about whether to proceed with them.
So I'm looking for 141. I'll see it.
I think it's not in the agenda.
It's the, it was on the agenda.
It'll be true to the back of your book, probably.
This is yours.
Is this still my agenda?
It's the chain link fence. It's 141.
It's the one you'd ask to put on.
So we do that one first?
The 141 or this?
No, let's just do that first.
You want to do 46 first?
I can go either way.
We've got 141.
Okay, 141. All right. So 141, you know, we made the motion not to have chain link fences. I was a little afraid what might happen, but I wanted to see how it was going to play out. What happened was, for instance, Old Dixie Highway, they've got a series of fences that were there. They had one homeless camp. A guy put up a fence around it, protected his property. Across the street, a boat marine place put chain link fences to protect his property as well. Both have served well.
Oh, God, that's hideous.
The person with the radio station, Unique Gifts, came in and actually put it, so it didn't even affect US 19's view, but it, it's right next to all this other chain link fence, which all, doesn't look bad. And it's all protecting their property. So I think by making the step that we did to go just avoid, avoid, to make it illegal for chain link fences and gates visible from collecting materials, has caused a, a big problem for that area. And maybe a few other areas. We have in front of our own fire station we're putting up. So I would like to see us repeal what we put back and just change it back to where it was before.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to go. I don't, I don't agree with that.
Those chain link fences you were talking about, some of those were in before we made that?
Oh, yes. The ones that were there were there. It's just a new guy coming in. He's got chain link fences all around him, and now he can't go put one in. Protect his property.
So how do you ever clean up if you leave the old ugly stuff allowed? I mean, at some point, that fence, the old fences will get changed and get better. But you have to start somewhere. Can you put my photos up? So there's, there's some, I just drove around Date City here. I did that at lunchtime. So maybe we do those ones first. And then I have, so here's Date City, right down the street. I don't know if you can zoom in on that.
That's the armory.
Huh?
Protection.
So that's the armory.
Yeah.
But let me show you what they did on the front. Okay, can you show the next picture? That's on the side road, which, but that's what they did on the front. And it makes a big difference. Picture if that were chain link and bobbed wire. What, what kind of community do you build when you wrap your businesses with chain link and bobbed wire? So I think there's, there's more there. I'm, I'm all for people wanting to have secure property. And we have said you can put chain link on the other parts. It's just you can't put it across your front. Here, now that's what that looks like. I mean, that's, that is not attractive. And if I were Date City, I wouldn't be allowing that.
Well, let me ask you a question.
And here, and here as well. But, but keep going. There's, you'll see where there, where other, what the difference is when you put the decorative metal fence.
Let me ask you a question. One question. So the gentleman that put the fence up, did he get a permit to put the fence up?
He went to a fence company that told me didn't need a permit, and they put the fence up.
So did we need a, a permit or did we not need a permit?
You don't require, we don't require fence permits.
We, so I went back and listened. Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you want, if you want to play it, you can pull up the YouTube from December 6th of 2022 and go to minute, it goes from 35 to 40 something. And this is why I was looking for Roy before, and I asked Brad, because we had this problem. We knew this was going to happen. Like, what's the procedure for commercial fences?
You did raise this issue.
Yes. If we have no fence permit, how are people going to know that? So what Sally said was that she was going to start an education process as they work towards a procedure for the fences. Now, I had my staff call a number of fence companies to see if anyone reached out to them. Because there's like seven or eight in the county. Were you informed of the change? Because you should reach out to the stakeholders, right? Because they would know. I mean, they, they should know what our rules are. And they were only able to get rid of, get ahold of one because of the storm. Every, all the other ones went to answering machine. So we're going to go get on that tomorrow. But I, I'm curious, does anyone know what the county did to alert the companies that, hey, because we did that to the sign, to the sign manufacturers when we changed it. Did anyone let the sign, the fence companies know that they can no longer put a chain link across the, off the front?
So I'm unaware of any educational campaign that was, that was put forward on it. We could certainly do that.
Well, that's what she said she was going to do on December 6th, 2022. Because we knew this was going to happen. And it's unfortunate. And I said, "We don't want this to happen." Because people pay money for these, and then they get in trouble. And so there has to be a procedure. I don't want the front of our roads lined with chain link and bobbed wire. But I get the security. So our compromise, and the sheriff is fine with these. And as a matter of fact, these are more secure than a chain link. Because I can tell you, I've hopped over many a chain link fence in my life. So I, I'm, I would not be okay with taking out the ability. No. I don't want businesses lining, lining up with chain link and bobbed wire in the front.
The sad thing is with this business here, they actually didn't do it in the front on 19. They did it on Old Dixie, which abuts up to all the other chain link fences.
Well, that's another main road. Old Dixie's a main road too, right?
I'm sorry, call it a main road.
So they border two main roads.
But all along it, you've got chain link fences. And they don't look bad. And, but they're safe too. They, they, they're high enough where the homeless don't jump over them.
I, I looked at their pictures and, you know, that's just.
I've got, I've got, can you show the pictures I got?
It's just not, it's not the look we want.
She'll show you the pictures I took when I went there. Because I heard, I heard about it. So let me go take a look at this. And literally, there's this fence everywhere. So I don't know what the visibility you're going to protect.
Well, you can drive up 52 and, and 19 and, and up in that area, and it needs a, it needs a cleanup.
Well, what about the fire station?
I don't think we should be putting it in. If, if we're putting it in, you got, we got to put the decorative metal fence in. Don't be junking off.
The fire, the fire station is being secured.
Oh.
Because it's, because it's under construction.
Oh, that's temporary. That's okay.
I know. It's a chain link fence. Looks awesome. Right?
Are you talking about the fire station on Rowan 17?
On 52, we're building a fire station with the.
Yeah, they put that up temporarily.
Yeah, that's construction.
We would never put a chain link bobbed wire fence around a fire station or a library or anything.
So anyway, so if you, if you look at the property that's there, this, that's a property Dollar General's on 19 on the bottom screen. Above that, there's Anthony Marine. Running breakers on both sides of the street. They chain link everything around it. To the south of the property, where actually Anthony's right there. And then to the north, that was a homeless camp that, as the lady said, some person either died there or on her property. And then right beside them. So they're blending into their picture to what's all around it.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing? That they're blending into?
Well, again, they want to protect the homeless people from going in there.
Well, no, I get that. But, but the other type of fence is allowed and, and protects them just as well. I just, you know, how are you going to open a door for one, one person and not bring down all the rest of what we're trying to do? Because I'll, I have other pictures. Can you put my pictures up? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to clean up my area, 19 and 54 and, no, that's the Cogan grass. It's in the list that Katie sent. I think there's multiple on a page. I don't have to send it to you. Keep going down, 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 down. There's the decorative fences. And here's, there, there you see the business there putting it in. And up here, and then, and then you have the cha, this, this stuff up here in the upper right, I mean, and the, the bobbed wire. I just, if you drive around other communities, and remember, we're a, we're a county that really has to think like a city a lot. It's just not done. And we just need to grow up a little bit. And so I'm all for it on the sides and the back if it's not. They're in a rare situation, maybe, where they're got two main roads.
Surrounding.
Yeah. No, I'm not, well, surrounding isn't the issue, because one day, businesses change and they come in for changing and that, and then they'll have to clean up, like we're doing with the sign code. But we have to start somewhere. But we needed to have, we need to do our education piece. And it doesn't take long to call eight companies and just send them a little handout that says, "Hey, our ordinance has changed. Here's a copy. We can, we can email it to you. Don't, don't put any fences on these roads, these type of roads." And I don't think that was done. Did you know of anything, Denise?
You were, you asked her to do it too.
I, I can tell you it was not.
I asked, I asked Sally for a lot of this.
It was not done. So it was, it was not done.
So glad Roy's here.
Yeah. I mean, we did our regular interested parties meeting, and we do state what's going to be changed in the code, so that I would imagine fence companies are part of the interested parties and contractors roundtable and all that. So I, I don't know if anyone who is a fence contractor attended those. But no, we didn't specifically do outreach to fence companies.
I almost feel like we should get them to sign a paper that they've been notified. Like, send it, is that, is that okay, Jeff? Can you notify a company? So that way the.
Well, you can, I mean, you can send, send a notification, return receipt requested, registered mail. And I mean, I'm not sure what you, then you at least know that they've received it and we can, but if they're in the business, they're supposed to know what codes and ordinances there are. If they're not required to get, fence companies should know that they're not required to get permits, but that doesn't exempt them from the land development.
No, no. And I'm not, what I want to do is protect the customer.
No. And I say, I don't know that you can, you can force them to, to sign a receipt, but you can force them through the US Postal Service to sign that they've received our mail and that's what it is.
So most fence companies do all types of fences. And so if, if, because I had this with a sign, an instance with a, where a guy was remodeling a business, and he went and got, spent the money on new signs, and the sign company, I believe, knew that we were changing our sign ordinance. And I think, and I'm, I'm not going to say who it was, but I'm speculating that he thought he was going to get two signs out of it instead of one. And, and so we actually managed it so that he didn't have to. But that sign company does a lot of work in the county, and he knew we were chang, that it, that it had changed. And so if a, if someone gets a fence, pays for a fence, and that company knew that I couldn't pay, have that fence, and then now I have to get another fence, I would make that company pay for, you know, not to, I would take some kind of recourse to say, "Hey, you knew I was supposed to have that kind of fence. And so I shouldn't be paying for it, or take that out of the right fence that the code requires and don't charge me twice." That's, that's why I want to make sure that if there's a way we can notify the sign companies, I mean, the fence companies.
You can always ask them to voluntarily sign something, but that would require sending somebody from code act out to.
Well, there's only eight, or eight or nine that we found, anyway.
What about fences?
Offenses?
Fence companies, yeah.
Well, they got them in all the other counties too. They come to defenses. I mean.
Well, and, and other counties, they require a fence permit. So if, the Hernando, they all have fence permits. We're the one that doesn't have a fence permit.
I understand, but you got a lot of fence companies that are neighboring counties right next to.
What do you think of putting in a process, what Sally said she was supposed to be researching of a, of requiring a fence permit, or putting something in there that says, "What can we do to, so that a fence company has to go look up something to put in a fence for commercial?"
I mean, you would have, I would, I would guess you would, the only way to compel them would be to regulate it, like what you're suggesting with a permit. I mean.
I think that protects the whole.
If you make it a permit, it protects the guy that goes to wanting, says, "Oh, I don't have to draw a permit. It's okay. I can put it in."
Yeah.
Well, he knows anything different. I mean, and then we're going to come later until he, he's thrown his money away. He's got to take the first stand.
I think we need to put in.
I have a problem with that, so.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I, I just, I'm, I'm thinking through the machinations of, of what that would mean to regulate that on, on our part.
And do you know how many times, like, okay, let me say that the, I had a private conversation and they were able to fix it, so I didn't pull it off the consent agenda. But that crockett towing, he put his fence in the wrong place. So technically, we should be making him move his fence. He put it in the wrong place.
Interesting with this property, with this project, the fence company actually put it on Anthony's property. When I was reading the agenda part, I saw they were like citing Anthony as well. I go, "What happened? What did you do?" He goes, "I didn't do anything." Says, "They put the fence seven inches or 10 inches on my property."
But no, he didn't leave any room, very little room for landscaping. That fence is supposed to be buffered.
Well, even still, I'm just saying, they, with no permit needed, they just went out and installed it.
Yeah. So I really think we need to do a little bit, get like our neighbors and.
All right. So let's, let's bring this back up for a discussion about what we're going to do. Because clearly what we're doing is not working. We need to do something different. Just because I feel bad for these people, however.
Let's keep happening.
It's, it's gonna, so.
So is that something that?
Yeah, we can, we can bring back, you know, some kind of draft permitting process or something of what that, what that might look like. I mean, it could be an over the counter kind of, you know, kind of quick thing that would, you know, provide at least the top cover and educate the owner and/or the contractor as to what is and isn't, isn't allowable. I mean, there may be other discussions on whether or not the type of fence that you guys want to see, if that's still, you know.
We went through that. We said, and the attorney lays it out beautifully.
Sorry, I stepped out for a moment. Sorry, I stepped out for a moment, so I.
So, so the attorney, just go back and listen to December 6th, 2022. And that's our second conversation on it. And it passed 5-0, but he lays out how you describe, and, and the planning commission had an issue with not allowing aluminum. They said, why say the metal? Make it, you, I can't remember the way you described the, the. Welded wire. And there's a couple of terms that he called out, but he said is prohibited from the, on these roads. Now, yesterday in a meeting with staff, I think it was yesterday, might have been the day before, I found that apparently we put fences in like six different places in our code. And in one place, some of our staff is interpreting it that, well, okay, if you put a hedge in front of the fence, it's not visible. No, that isn't what, we didn't say, we didn't say visible. We said not allowed on, on a frontage. Because we know what happens to our hedges in the county. And the minute it becomes visible, I'm gonna call code enforcement. And then they're gonna have to put another kind of fence in because you cannot keep a hedge, no one keeps a hedge here permanent. So we.
I think the only true thing you can do is, is make it where you regulate it to where they have to have a permit.
Yeah, I agree.
And then you don't have a guy falling in this trap that he said, well, you don't need permits, so it's okay. Well, nobody's gonna tell him any different until the fence is up and then code drives by and says you can't do it, so.
All right, so let's.
It doesn't have to be expensive.
So let's bring that back. They'll bring that back.
And, and I think a stakeholder meeting is good. So bring all the stakeholders in with staff first and then let them discuss and prove.
Yeah, that'll work. Yep, we'll do that.
Okay.
All right, let's move to R 46.
R 46 should be a lot simpler. This is, I think you guys have all been briefed.
Can I go back to 141 because, you know, we're, we're gonna come back with a process and there's some, there's some things that the board would like. I mean, I, I, we're, we're about to incur fines on the particular issue that was brought up here. I, I didn't know if there was any direction from the board on, on, you know, what you want me to have code do with what we currently have out there or if that's even a good idea or what we.
Do we have just the ones? We have just the one?
Ah, there.
That we know about against.
I mean, maybe one or two that, that may be out there. I mean, I mean, you could just.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't find them until we, and then we put this on a permit and regulate it. But it's hard to find them when you, they don't know. I mean, they really don't know.
I agree with Chairman here. The problem is that you've already issued a citation.
You've issued a citation, correct.
So I can't in good conscience, it's a valid citation issued under the current land development code. The will of the board is that it's, it's a violation.
It's still a violation, correct.
So do we charge them a fine for that and, and then stop all fines?
The, the. Well, do you want it brought into compliance or not?
Correct.
This is really stinking.
Well, we're, we're enforcing the current code is, but this is what prompted this. And so I just, I wanted to bring it up just to have some clarity.
If you find them and you make them take it out.
Yes.
The guy's out, however much money it is, and it's probably not cheap what he got.
Well, except as the commissioner has already said, if I got a citation and I got a $500 fine, I'd be going back to my fence company going, what are you doing to me?
Yeah.
But there's examples I have real life. There's an active code case right now. It's an existing fence, a company, bought a company and the company sold, same company name. It's a six foot chain link fence barbed wire. It's been a light industrial business on a major highway. In our county code enforcement, it's giving them a run. And they're saying, no, you need to swap out your fence, put up vinyl. I mean, it's 10 acres of vinyl. They're looking at six feet.
No, no, just across the front.
They're, they, they bought a pre-existing business.
Is this on 41?
They just acquired a business. And they're trying to worry about making payroll, get their business up and revving capital. And we're over here as a county, I look at as almost borderline harassment. I mean, that's not the best, most business friendly, their experience with Pasco County so far and the code enforcement has not been pleasant.
Did they say they had to do the whole property or, no, it's just the front?
They have, we have all the documentation. We're working with them. That's why I talked, stepped outside, told the administrator about what we do here. And this is an existing business, an existing property that the fence has come with the property.
Well, it depends on when the fence came in.
Well, if it's, if it's an existing property that, and the fence predates our ordinance, it's non-conforming. Code doesn't have, unless it, unless it doesn't meet the old regulations.
Correct. And I don't know the details of it. We can certainly dive into it.
The fines, the fines bother me. Code shouldn't be fine in a collection agency. Code should be helping people get into compliance and not putting a onerous, burdensome additional expense on our businesses in this county. I think code needs to be there to help get into compliance and not be punitive monetarily unless it's absolutely egregious. That's just my general opinion on it. And this is fencing. This isn't like.
Have they been fined?
They're, yeah, they're, they're currently going on.
And, and you're saying, but you're, but, but I'm very curious if they're telling him he has to put something other than chain link, which is it vinyl? There's other things.
Fencing, which is.
All, well, that could be, the vinyl is required, they're allowed to put, sometimes they require vinyl if it's a buffer and there isn't room to put the landscape buffer between issues. So we may be talking about two different, you know what I'm talking about?
The vinyl doesn't protect the business and it won't protect people trying to get into the business. The vinyl is a hazard for this particular business in my opinion.
Well, I, but I'm just saying that may not be related to the, what we're talking about. It could be that they didn't put in the, if it's, you're saying it's industrial? If it's got some other zoning next to it where it requires a buffer, sometimes they can do an outstanding, Brad, I'm talking to your, talking your speak here. An outstanding, put in a vinyl fence and then they're allowed to be legal, right? Am I saying that right? Because our, our code just says across the front can't be chain link and barbed wire.
Yeah, we have certain, Brad, tip in play at the moment, we have certain buffer types that require a six foot opaque screening. And that can be achieved through berms, fences that are opaque, like a vinyl fence or a masonry wall or hedge or any combination of those things that basically screen it.
What about a chain link with a covering over it?
Yeah, the mesh.
So that was historically allowed until the recent change that's.
Only across the front.
On the front, correct. So there are different combinations of things they can do in, in those areas on the sides where they're bidding other districts that, that there may be a buffering issue. Across the front, it's a landscaping requirement for a landscape buffer and, and the chain link fence ordinance piece that's causing the issue in the front.
So that might be a difference.
That's our general rule. I don't know how that applies to specific site.
Okay. So y'all gonna bring this back to us?
Yes, we will. And that what we're, what we intend to bring back is just kind of a permitting process that the board would agree upon for us to implement. So what I hear is basically we, we maintain course and speed. The, the ordinance is still the ordinance. The permitting process will in and of itself handle education.
Handle everything in the future, yeah.
Allowable things. So we will, we will continue to press with, with our enforcement and compliance issues that, that we have out there.
Well, if I, if I could make a recommendation about that, at this point where there's only like two cases going on right now, I think code's got plenty of other things to do to focus on, so maybe just like shift gears on that. I mean, how do you, I mean, you try to resolve it.
But don't let the attorney hear you say that.
The citations are citations, but I'm just saying.
I mean, you're essentially telling me to suspend one, suspend enforcement of an ordinance.
No, I'm saying you've got plenty of things to do out there. I got, I got plenty of things.
Let us see if we can work things out with these two, if it's across the front.
I'm pretty sure we've communicated that, but in the particular instance for Mr. Waitman, I'll, I'll have to, I'll have to investigate that one. I'm pretty confident the other one has been, but.
Something weird on that one.
Yeah, okay.
And the other one's gonna go back to the vendor to say, you shouldn't have put it in, violate its code, so.
And can we, in the meantime, while you're working on that, can someone ease, get a copy of our language in layman's term and get it to those fence companies? So we could try and minimize.
I'm sure we could put a letter out pretty quickly.
Yeah, there's like, I think they said there's like eight. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
R 46?
R 46, this one should be a lot less.
Well, it should be, but it's still another thing to do besides this, so.
Yeah.
It's R 46.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My contact is Prito's Planning and Development Department.
Okay.
So on October 10th, 2023, an item was brought up during Commissioner's items from Commissioner Mariano, talking about amending section 1105 dot five dot G dot three of the Land Development Code, which considers self-storage and warehousing and specifically the prohibition of covered and open storage within 300 feet of transit corridors. And in the memo before you for R 46, proposed feasible language is set forth below. In the particular circumstance that the commissioner was referring to, there was a business, Mears Plumbing, or about Shady Hills and Suncoast Highway, where they had a tract of land that was essentially within the 300 feet of the Suncoast Parkway. And so language was worked where the Land Development Code could be updated to be very specific, that segment of the transit corridor that is north of State Route 52, so Suncoast Parkway north of 52. With, and within the urban service area to allow for arguable storage, be a special exception within 300 feet of the transit corridor, the Suncoast Parkway. If that parcel or portion of the parcel is on C3 or I1 or I2. And so that's kind of the language that's identified in the, in the memo.
So can I start off again?
Yes, it's gonna take long.
I know. Sorry, but I worked very hard.
I'm sure that won't be answered.
I worked very hard to get the Suncoast Highway, me and a bunch of people in the state designated as a scenic corridor. Part of the restrictions on that is that there has to be a landscape, you know, it has to be scenic. There's no billboards allowed on it and there's, part, part of that, the way, part of the way we got the designation was because of the trail. But everyone that I've worked with in my district that's come in there, we've, you know, had them make sure they had a nice buffer. Now, I only had residential, but I worked with D.R. Horton to add more buffer. But I would be okay with this as long as there was a complete tree buffer from the highway. I don't want to be driving down a scenic road and see a bunch of junk, you know, stuff stored in a parking lot with, so they've got to keep, they don't have to keep 300 feet, but you can get Cypress or you can have a tree buffer that's pretty thick. Don't they have one there if I looked at that site?
They do. It's, it's hard to see anything there. The way the site sits, the way it sits down low.
They're up above.
So that's really, it's a one-off piece really. I don't, it's not like a continual thing we don't worry about. It's like a one-piece that a guy's trying to do something with his property. It's right next to where his business is.
Yeah, but can he keep the trees between?
He's just got extra land and he's trying to do.
Can he keep a buffer of trees between there and the Suncoast?
I think there already is.
There it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, he's not gonna take those out, right? So I'm okay with it.
Okay. Part of the, part of the answer, I think, is that it's a special exception, which means that you can condition any approval or the planning commission would condition any approval that may be issued as it's currently written, of course. We could potentially add performance standards to the code that would ensure that the scenic corridor is protected.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good direction? Do we vote on it?
I guess.
So we have to vote on that? Do we vote on that?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, all right, okay.
Direct planning and development to initiate a land development code amendment to section 1105.45 as outlined in the background somewhere.
So moved?
Second.
That's good. All our papers, say aye.
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 Motion to pass 4-0. They got direction. Now quickly, Ralph Lehrer, I want you up front.
Yeah, I need to talk.
I hate that you're last, but since you did wait and didn't run out of here, give us a, give us a little upbeat about the weather in Tallahassee, I guess.
Well, it's passed through. It was a really bad day up in the Panhandle. Ralph Lehrer, Intergovernmental Affairs Officer. I just wanted to briefly, you know, session just started today. They're, I'm watching committee meetings back in the back there. We have the live local bill that went up today. David Goldstein has gone before the committee. He did speak with the president's office with our concerns and issues. We still haven't gotten on the same page yet, so they're, the bill's moving forward without the addressing the issues of our concern. We still have two outstanding concerns. We, we like the, the glitch bill they've presented. It removes industrial and there's a few other items. We're trying to put in mixed use on our commercial property, which they're, you know, if we can give, get some language that they are comfortable with, we can move forward with that. So hopefully we can do that before a snake stop or before it hits the floor. They don't want to address this year anything dealing with the tax exemption.
Then what about the 120% AMI?
Not a surprise.
Because that's market rate.
Yeah, and, and, and they have a hard time discussing, you know, we had that, they had that discussion this afternoon to have that follow-up. He used an example where based on the, on the calculation in the AMI, this development is going to charge $2,000, which is actually $65 just less of what their market price is. And there's, and their argument back was, well, the property appraiser, you know, could deny them. And it's like, no, you tell me how that's, how they can deny them. So, so that's why I said they're, 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 they're batting it back and forth, but we've got David up there and he's working really hard on this. So hopefully he'll come back and, and maybe we can figure out a way that they'll, they might at least address the, the commercial.
If they won't address that commercial, only industrials?
Only industrials removed. Right now they are not gonna remove the commercial or at least allow us, but in mixed use.
Can we add there, is there a way to add in there? You may know this, but we have two apartments, existing apartments in Trinity. Y'all may or may not know this.
They're built.
These existing apartments are applying and they submitted to the county to become live local projects.
Yeah, this is not okay.
So here's what we're gonna lose in Adaloram.
Which ones are they?
Uh, it is, they, they are the Gallery at Trinity and Tapestry Cypress Creek. So they've applied to become live local projects. So they essentially pay, they want a $768,000 a year tax exemption while charging over $2,000 a month for rent for a two-bedroom. The company's from California and we're gonna lose, what are we gonna lose, Carbaugh?
Close to $800,000 a year in Adaloram.
Any from each one?
That would be, I would, I imagine it's between both the school board and, and the general fund.
So we lose that. Our, our businesses and landowners and taxpayers are gonna have to flip the bill for those shortcomings and the only people getting a break are these out of state companies. It does not benefit our resident. It doesn't benefit our workforce.
No, we stayed the course on our lawsuit.
And the only way to do it is we prepare.
Stay the course.
To hit them.
Yeah, we should stay the course.
It's egregious.
And I think that's the, the plan is we still have to move forward with what you all decided previously.
That's wrong.
And, and I think.
The two moved up to number one in the.
Yeah, they moved traffic.
Front of the line.
These existing, these existing active multifamily units, built residents in them are trying to.
Why did they let that happen?
To change course and apply to.
So as we move forward and we wait and, and hopefully, you know, like I said, it probably is not gonna happen this year. Note, take note that, that cities and counties around the state are looking at what we're doing and have reached out, whether it be the letters, which I gave you a copy of our letter that went, today, the Tri-County letter finally went out. So that, that's headed up to Tallahassee and should have been hand-delivered as well today after session started. So you're seeing the cities and counties looking to us and, you know, we've taken the lead and, and, and probably will follow suit.
Well, with this new knowledge, you know, the administration. Well, with this new knowledge, you know, the administrator told me this, I didn't know we had anyone going through it, they're going to do that in other counties, too.
Yeah.
They're going to start feeling what we're feeling.
Yeah.
I mean, so.
They're actually. Yeah, I'm, I'm told by Mr. Goldstein that that example actually caught the attention of, of the Senate President, so it was a little surprised by, by that. So, I, I think there's maybe an unintended consequence move there. But, you know, that's just conjecture. At this point, I, you know, I did alert Hillsborough and Pinellas County of, of the reading schedule for the glitch bill, and so hopefully, they'll, they'll join us in, you know, in those discussions. But I'm very happy that Attorney Goldstein was able to go up and speak on behalf of the county.
At least it gives good discussion. They were having good discussion this day, and I think they, they realize and see that, you know, changes need to be made. The reason why I think they moved forward so quickly and, and actually, after being told by FAC and, and different groups, they want to touch it this year, the military bases and the airports were what really, they had, they said, we have to go in and, and fix that. The President realized that. And then she agreed then to do the, the industrial as well when she was, you know, brought out, turned and explained to her why it was not necessary to have that in there. But that being said, there's other things, it's going to be another busy year. Just the deadline for bills to be filed was at the end of last week. Thursday and Friday alone, we had three hundred bills at hand. So, now, having gone through and seen how many of those impact us, I think today alone, twenty, that are going to impact the local government and county. So, it's just going to be another busy session that we have. We have our priorities that finally got printed up.
Do we have them?
I gave you one copy. I, I know you're going up, but that's the other thing I wanted to talk about.
Yeah.
Commissioner Starky, Commissioner Mariano, your plan is Wednesday you will be going up for FAC. Is that correct?
Leaving right after the workshop next week.
I can.
I didn't know if you were attending that Wednesday or not. We are all going up on the twenty-fourth, the following Wednesday.
So, are you going, are you going up next for FAC?
I will if we're going to go push this.
Yeah, I mean, so that's what I want to talk to him about, and what appointments do you want to set?
So, what my plan is, is I have some issues that I'm going to present to you. I'll, I'll come and talk to you. I'll give you extras of copies of these. They'll be over tomorrow. And then, we have another issue that we would like you to talk with our, our delegation about, and that is the Tourism Development Taxes. There have been multiple bills filed that want to try to go in there and raid the funds.
Yeah.
Bad idea. We need to educate our delegation. I think, I really want you to focus on that when you go up on, on Wednesday.
Will David be going back up with us?
He will be going up, but not, not next week. He'll be going up probably, he might be going up next week if the committee, second committee hears the live local bill.
Because I would like us to update FAC at our, you know, the morning meetings that we, the kickoff and.
Yeah, FAC's one thing. I, you know, I didn't, I wasn't planning on setting up meetings on there. I don't know if he's really, if he's busy, or he could do that. And I don't know if FAC will give you the opportunity to speak. It was like pulling teeth to let him, let us speak at the last meeting, to talk about live local. They didn't want to talk about it. So, let me, let me, let me check on that, see if that's possible.
Let's give a call in.
And do we want to go to DEP? Yeah, I mean, we need to talk about these things, sorry, for a second. I, I mean, are there other agencies that we want to stop in at?
Well, you know, at the previous meeting, we allowed two million dollars for Newport Richard to subcutisour. I'm looking at what they've asked for. If there's no subcutisour on their list.
Right.
FGA, FGA has one.
Yeah.
Did FGA ask?
That was the one FGA put in last year.
Oh, we got to push that.
So, I mean, they should be, they should be asking for that.
I want to kind of bring you back.
I will help lobby for the FGA.
Yeah, I think I have an email related to that that I received over the weekend.
Yeah, they, they, they did refile it. So, so, since you brought it up, these are all the appropriations requests that have been filed that impact our county, that includes city nonprofits, different groups, and then ours as well. So, some of them don't have both House and Senate sponsors.
The sheriff wants another center. He's got first, then we've got the, the one with the missing exploited children, and now we want a emotional health center.
We're aware of that one. We've discussed that one.
Just, you know, just want to make sure as we build out those buildings that we're, and I've talked to him about this, making sure we're building a campus that is well-built and well-laid out.
So, back to, so, so again, the plan.
Where does the money come to put these, to staff this? Because this would be.
That would be the sheriff's office.
It would be the sheriff's office, right?
Well, we're going to be talking to him.
There you go. So, I'll bring this in for Lani by just saying, so, the other item that I did put out, and I gave you the wrong one, but I did send it to you electronically. There's another group going up, like they did last year, the Greater Pasco Chamber of Commerce. They're going up February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Again, I gave you, they had sent me last year's invitation, and I gave you the wrong one. But I did send the electronic. So, that's a third date that we could go up and take a bite of the apple on. That would be a one-day trip. We can discuss that down the line. I'll get with you all individually on that and see if you want to go.
I'll be at, at NACO.
And that is the same time as NACO. That is correct.
When, when, when we talked about all this la, last year and said we were going to do it a little differently, I thought we were going to work with our chambers and, and get a unified front for how important these were, and I don't think we ever did that.
As far as.
That's how Citrus County does it, and if you look at what Citrus brings home, remember, we talked with Sean about that, that, that the whole community supports the effort, and it's not just us. Like, the school district should be pushing this as well, these sidewalk projects. And, I mean, we just, I think it helps us if we have broad county community support on what we're asking for. And that's what I was told was a way to be successful. So.
We, we had done joint work with the school board going up at the same time.
Yeah, and I don't know if they're going, are they going up at the same time?
No, they have a different day. They go up for school board day when they go up.
They used to go up with us.
So, so, if you remember, we, we normally go up on FAC day.
Yeah.
We agreed at the Tri-County workshop to do it differently and go up with Pinellas and Hillsborough and go up on Tampa Bay Day, which is on the twenty-fourth. So, and we are going to be partaking in a reception that evening. So, we'll be doing our own meetings, you know, that day in the afternoon when we get up there, and then the next morning on the twenty-fifth. So, that's why we decided to go with the twenty-fourth. We don't have to, the plan is, is that, what was discussed at the workshop, is that they hope that this can grow, and we will then participate next year during the day. We can bring up our chamber, our tourism development, we can take up Camp Qua Pie and all that stuff and, and be a part of what already exists and has been going on for Hillsborough County, but include Pasco and Pinellas, if that's what you so choose to do. But this is just the first attempt to try to hold hands as three different counties from the Tampa Bay area.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And do the reception, that's why we moved that date.
Some of them are also coming up for FAC.
Well, Ralph, the sheriff has, you said the sheriff has a project on there.
He does. You'll see it. All of them are listed.
To knock Cop County Administrator with that seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand in lost revenue a year. It's approximately fourteen sheriffs getting it. So, when you say who's going to staff the project, it'd be nice to have the sheriff weigh in with us.
All the sheriffs.
On live local and say, hey, look, this is, this is, truly has an impact across the board. So, this is all.
Good discussion.
Simple invitation.
Good discussion.
Wow, we have a lot of developers asking for things.
And that money would come to Pasco.
Is that a new thing? Does every county have developers asking for projects?
They've always been asking, and some have received.
So, some of those items that are not listed as Pasco County would directly come to the county. At the end of the day, those two developer projects are.
Where is the Pasco pedestrian overpass bridge? What is that?
That's property over at, near the.
Yeah, that would be a crossing over Ridge Road and something like.
How did that jump the list that we have in the MPO?
These, these are private asks.
These are private asks. This is on the develop, the developer property. Good discussion. Okay. Anything else? I think I'll begin with you, as you said, for, for next week to prepare you all for FAC. Okay? So, I'll talk to you the rest of the week. All right?
So, does anybody have a lot of things they want to talk about on old business?
I had a list.
I have one request.
One?
Simple.
A list?
Yeah, but you already went through a bunch of them.
Already went through some.
Oh, I got, yeah, I got a few things. Just.
Well.
I've got two things.
I can tell you, it's about twenty minutes, we're out of here.
I have two things and an announcement.
If you're through or not through, we're gone.
I go before you. We go like this.
No, you don't. No.
Yeah, I do.
No, you go by history.
Oh, district.
Yeah.
I'll let you slide.
So.
Okay, go ahead.
Historically, so there's a.
Oh, Sam, ask.
Commissioner Moore was here. This group worked with Commissioner Moore's office in Terry in the past. So, there's a concert for the cure, for cure. It's a concert benefiting, benefiting cancer resource, research at Land O' Lakes Heritage Park. And they're asking that the county waive their fees that where they can profit more, and historically.
How much were their fees?
It's a couple hundred bucks, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
How much?
It's a couple hundred dollars. I mean, it's.
They can't pay you with two hundred bucks.
More money for charity, sir.
It's gone in the past, and so.
Okay. Make a motion.
Motion on second.
Second.
We got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board members.
It's passed. Okay. Next, you're done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I gave her mine.
Ms. Starky?
Me, okay.
You got to hurry.
Yeah, we're going to go fast.
You're going to have one.
And they've got some pictures. I'll start with the, Commissioner Oakley, you were there. We had the pleasure of putting out, I think we did six hundred cars that morning.
Oh, yeah.
Giving out the, the food.
That's pretty amazing how many cars go through the.
Yeah, that, that is a well-oiled process.
Well, well done on Mike Fasano's part, too.
And thanks for Mike and everyone for putting that together. Then my staff went to Metropolitan Ministries, which is the next pictures, which I think the county, had you been there earlier in the morning? Was it the same day, or you went, I think you were there on the same day as us?
Yes, our, our executive leadership team, so the Assistant County Administrators and myself, we had volunteered over there as personal shoppers, parking. It was fantastic experience.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've done it. I did it at the old Metropolitan Ministries site, and now it's moved right now to Generations Church and another very well-oiled machine. And because we were going to have bad weather Sunday, man, that Saturday was, or Friday, Saturday, what, we did on Friday, Saturday was going to be bad weather. It was packed, and, and I, I don't even know how many people they, oh, thirty thousand families. Phew. All right, want to show you a picture of our county flag. And my staff came to, to me with this, and they said, what do you think if we had a contest to redesign our flag? Because look how fun those other ones are, and look at ours. So, we, you know, let us talk, I don't know, with whom and.
I don't know about those others, but that one on the left is traditionally Pasco County.
No, that is ours. And the other ones, this is Orange County, this is Okaloosa, and this is Hernando. Hernando changed those a few years back. So, I think it'd be fun to have a little contest and jazz up that flag.
Hernando's, I believe, is their branding. Would be like your, your branding.
If we wanted to go that way with the branding. Yeah. So, just wondered, did you like the idea?
We have existing branding already, which is the cranes and the sun logo.
We can, we can design it ourselves.
I mean, our seal always is the seal to the Commissioner's.
We'll change the cranes to pink flamingos.
I mean, do you like that, or would you want to try and go to something a little more fun?
I've said for a long time that we should change it. Traditional as it is, I think every other county in Florida does something, ties into the area.
Yeah.
And does something nice. So, I, I think we should do it to dress it up.
Yeah. And, you know, it could include our brand, and it could not. So, maybe we have someone give us ideas on what direction the contest should go in. Or do you want to decide it here? I mean, our brand, I mean, ours is that yellow, is that bird like theirs. That's the only thing. The heron, right?
No, San Hill Crane.
San Hill Crane.
Look, look, put it out to the people.
Yeah.
Let the people tell you what they want.
And we could, you know, have a monetary.
Yeah, let me, let me talk to our communications staff.
Okay.
Get back to us.
Okay, so there's that one. There's the metal fences. Move on from that. I already talked to you about cogan grass. We already decided that.
We did that.
So, we've got a prob, problem with semis parking on, on our county right away. And this is on Trinity Boulevard. And actually, our, our code went out and gave them a warning, and the, the one left, and then another one came in. So, you know, I'm working on a, a procedure page with staff and the sheriff's office and all affected parties on what to do when a homeless person, when someone calls in and reports a homeless person or homeless campus. We, we're all over the place on how we deal with these. It's really, I mean, who's, who is supposed to be ticketing these people? Is it our code? Is it the sheriff's office? Is it the highway patrol? We also have it, I don't know if I have picture, any more pictures, but they're, they're doing it on a road behind the restaurants in Starky Ranch, but it's a CDD, so I'm, I'm Longspur, if you're ever in there. People have other RVs. That's, that's where they keep them, on, on the road of Longspur in, in Starky Ranch. So, we want to know what is the procedure and who's responsible, and I think we need to figure that out. Lastly, huh?
Yes, we already have that question.
Okay. I wanted to share with you that Marcy and the team submitted the AMSKILLS project for the twenty twenty-four Audrey Nelson Award with the National Community Development Association, so the CDBG, all projects in the country that use CDBG money, and we won. So, we're one of five projects in the country. And so, I'll be cutting my vacations short, sadly.
Oh, good.
Because it's when I'm on the ski slopes, sadly. But I'll be cutting out two days and heading to Washington with Tom Madano and Marcy and her, some of her staff. And we'll be presenting, and Congressman Bill Rax is invited, and we'll be receiving our award. So, I'm very grateful that they.
That's good.
Put us in and that we won. So, that's it for me.
Mr. Mariano?
I just want to say, I had a great wedding with my daughter getting married, December twenty-eighth. We did it in Saddle Brook, and I tell you, they were phenomenal. Everything was great.
Oh, they did a good job.
And we're very, very happy for her.
Great.
Happy New Year.
All right. That's it?
That's it.
Mr.
I'll be very, very brief. I texted you individually on New Year's Day, but I wanted to advise the board publicly that our community rating system, our CRS rating, was upgraded from a six to a five. That equates to an additional five percent of savings over on, on federal flood insurance for our citizens. So, hats off to our emergency management team, our building construction services team, and our stormwater teams for the, and, you know, and the host of the team for working together on that. A lot of it was just documentation of process that we did not really have pulled together for some two thousand eighteen. Commissioner Starky, now, maybe some concerns over increased costs for building. That is not the case from moving to a, a six to a five, or even a five to a four for that matter. If you were to lower it to a three, that, that could involve.
A three is killing Pinellas.
But, but nevertheless, it's, it's, it's a good thing. So, I just wanted to, you know, let the board know that, hey, we're saving our citizens some money on their flood insurance. So, thanks.
Marion County, you want to cover that?
Oh, I thought you were going to cover that, but that's.
I was going to let you cover it.
Well, thank you, sir. We, through our, through our facilities team relationships, we had the members of the Marion County Commission, as well as their administrative staff, come and visit Pasco County last week. They came specifically to, they wanted to talk, look at some of our fire stations. We weren't able to do that because their chief was unavailable. But we did look at animal services, as well as wellness centers. And it was a great opportunity to exchange information and, and learn about what the other teams are doing. And then I think we talked them out of going to Topgolf and sent them over to Popstroke, so they, they enjoyed their time here in Pasco County. It was great. Chair was there, myself were there to greet them, as well as some of our team members.
They turned out very nice.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was an excellent time. And of course, they extended an invitation to us to, to come visit their county at any time if there are things that we want to see. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Steinsteiner?
I don't have anything for you today.
I don't have anything for you today.
Well, I mean, we'd like some of your expertise or something. Okay.
So I.
Anything?
The boss did give me something, so.
Oh, the boss gave some, okay.
Gave me a minute.
Let's cover that.
So, a couple things, um, N82 is the IG 2024 Annual Audit Plan, it was emailed to the commission from Patrice Monaco McBride on December 18th, um, so you have a copy in your email. Just want to put it on the record, N87, our office is going to withdraw its minutes, um, but it has the wrong date on it, so we'll resubmit it on a future one.
Okay, all right.
But, right, and then lastly, um, there's jury scam hits again, another Pasco County resident was, um, called by a fake Pasco County deputy.
Wow.
Being told that she was going to have to pay $1,800 or risk being handcuffed and taken to jail, um, because she didn't show up for jury duty, um, which, uh, so they ended up, um, she ended up Venmo-ing the, the money.
Oh.
And they, um, so this individual paid that amount out of her Venmo account, and then the fake deputy then told this lady to go to the clerk's office and ask for Nikki or Nicole, and that's how we found out about it, but, um, it, we've been, we've been trying to put something out there, it keeps happening, at least once a month it happens, so they are out, but that's all we have.
That's it? Well, thank you. Only a couple of things, um, one of them is, uh, Mr. Waitman, I need you to serve on the, uh, aging group with Anne Marie, they meet one day a month, same day as Tempe Water, Jack and I can't serve, Catherine has all she can handle, it comes back to you, and she said she was going to try to have, they used to have two meetings, but she's going to try to have four meetings in Pasco, which would help you than going to.
Really better fair.
And you only have to, uh, make 10 meetings out of it, it's, well, it's a total of 10 meetings.
Yeah, I'll do my best for funding.
Well, I need you to, and I need you to at least make the minimum of that, because, because it has to be a commissioner, it can't, we can't assign it to someone else, it has to be a commissioner. I would be more than happy to do it, but I'm on Tempe Water and I can't do both, and Jack's got the same issues, so, and then Gary's not able on some of that.
I'll do my best.
All right, that's all along, just 10 meetings, once a month. Okay, uh, and also I need a person for VAB Board, uh, Mr. McBride had, uh, retired from that board, it only meets a couple, a couple, three days a year, I think, so it's very short. So if you have someone that would like to serve and, and that's a, that's actually a very interested board.
Ask Alan Altman, he is a current as a school board member.
Who?
Alan Altman.
Yeah.
And he lives here.
I think he's on it already, so.
Well, he was.
He was as a school board member.
Yeah. He'd be perfect for that.
He was as a school board member, but he's not on the school board.
Oh, that's right. I'll ask. But y'all think of any other names, let me know, so.
That, that meets over here, right?
Yes, meets right here. Myself and, and Mr. Waitman are on that same.
So we need a citizen, a, a citizen appointee?
Yes. If you think of someone to be good for that, then, and it's not a big requirement, you have to read the information, but it's, uh, it really goes very smoothly, it's not a long meeting or anything of that nature, so, okay.
See ya.
I don't think there was something, you can't leave.
I can't drive in the darkness.
We're not adjourned yet. You can't go, you can't ride in the dark, if you'd, if you'd have listened to me earlier in the day, you'd have been gone at 3 o'clock, but, well, that's all I have, um, thank everyone, I'm, uh.
Did you send out the list of our appointments?
What now?
Yes.
Yeah, I've sent them out.
It's all been handled.
All been handled, yep, and, um, I wish everybody a happy new year and a new beginning for this, the commission for this year, um, I look forward to being in a very, very busy year, we have a lot of good things going to happen, and, uh, with that, we'll adjourn. Gosh.
Depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater, most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.
Hi, I'm Ainsley with Pasco County Pavement Management. People always ask, why can't you pave roads faster? Well, the process isn't as simple as it seems. We use two methods, which you can see here, they're called milling and paving, and full depth reclamation and soil cement. What does that mean exactly? Let's break them down. 90% of our paving projects are done through milling and paving, which takes about two weeks, depending on weather and the length of the road. We start by grinding and removing two to three inches of the road, then we sweep the road to remove fines. Fines are small particles of asphalt or lime rock. Next, we spray tack, which is a mixture of oil and water, onto the road's surface to make sure that the asphalt bonds to the road's surface. Then we apply a layer or two of asphalt. Ever notice steam rising from the asphalt?